Did you get any real quick?
Meeting called order. Planning Commission, June seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Start with the pledge allegiance.
So Stan, sorry, hand over our hearts. Let us begin by a pledge of allegiance to the God for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seen in.
The governor, glasses. Roll call.
Commissioner Arvisu. Absent. Commissioner Morio.
Present.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Present.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Present.
And Chair Gonzalez.
President. Approval of the agenda at this time, the commission. May announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date. Or request the movement of an item on the agenda. Got a motion or put agenda?
I'd like to motion or put the agenda.
Second that.
Commissioner Arvisu, absent. Commissioner Morio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Going on to the next item, approval of the minutes. Planning Commission meeting. Minutes, May seventeen, two thousand twenty-three.
Like to motion approve the minutes for meeting on May seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Morio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Going on to the next item, written communications. Any moves now?
None from staff.
Going on to the next item, public comment, non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest. To the public that is not on the agenda, but within the subject. Matter jurisdiction thereof, please leave your comments in three minutes.
None online.
For public comments?
No.
Okay. Reports and requests.
Chair number percent.
Non-hearing items.
Not here, there are no.
Okay. Public hearing, calendar, and quiz judicial. Went on the first item, Monica Solos. They pronounced right.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Gabriel Betis, Development Service Director. We do have a presentation and Avalara. The technician will be giving this presentation today.
Let me finish up, I'm sorry, didn't finish reading the rest of it. Commercial use. Permit number three sixty-five allows a studio, a salon studio. At five thousand four hundred and sixty square feet. Existing commercial building located at. Eighty-four, zero, nine, zero, Avenue fifty. In the CG commercial, general commercial zone. Humberto Cortez applicant. Go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, and I'm here to present the CUP three sixty-five. My name is Avalara and I'm the planning technician. This is for a conditional use permit to allow a salon studio. At a five thousand four hundred and sixty square foot of commercial building and it's existing. So the building is actually located at the corner of Bam Yurin and Fifth Street, Fiftieth Street. Um. General plan designation is neighborhood center, zoning is general commercial. Side plot, so this, this is a standalone commercial building in the northwest, northeast corner of the commercial center. And it is known as shop two, so that's the great building that you see. So the applicant Humberto Cortez, he is, he owns both shop one and shop two, that's what we call them. The two rear buildings in the shopping center. This is a shopping center where it's the CVS is located. Um, so shop two sits on a one point seven acre lot. And just for reference, Shane Astani, he's a developer. He owns the two paths that are empty, the large empty building and the retention basin. So there's three owners of this commercial center. So this is an aerial view of, of the building in yellow. So the background, the building was constructed in two thousand and eight and it was part of a faced development project that included one hundred and sixty-seven single family homes. For a gated residential community. And that was behind the commercial center and the entitlement, it was never developed and it's now considered expired. So shop two was previously occupied as an educational facility operated by the Coachella Imagine Charter School. Which was approved in two thousand thirteen, but now the school has, has moved since to another location. The applicant would like to convert the existing shop to into twenty-five rentable salon, salon studios for beauty related uses. And that would be hair, makeup, eyelashes. So the site, the sizes were arranged from ninety to two hundred and sixty-five, sixty-five square feet. It also would be like single or double, so you would be able to rent it to one individual or two individuals. The rent would be from two hundred and fifty four to four hundred and fifty per week on a monthly contract. And the building, the way it's going to function would be. Building has one main entrance with connecting hallways that will lead into the individual salons. The three, the three salons that are facing the front are also have exterior access. We also have two restrooms and a one ADA restroom. So this is Sola Salon Studios, this is in Palm Desert. So the applicant wants to mimic something like this. We do have a couple around the valley, but not as many. And I know just by talking to him that in looking the, there is a one year waiting list for people. Okay. So in regards to parking, the site is fully developed and has an existing parking lot, which is highlighted in red. The commercial center has five points of access, two from Bam Yurin Street and three from Fiftieth Street. So the actual parking lot has sufficient lighting, we don't have any issues with that. The parking pavement is also in good condition. And the side parking modifications are not proposed nor are they required. So this is a picture of the parking lot. So we had, we do have ample room and we do need like fifty-five parking spaces. For these two buildings and this actually exceeds a fifty-five, so. We're good in regards to space. In regards to the landscaping, the landscape plan was approved with the previous entitlement development base in two thousand and eight. However, the CVS has stopped been maintaining their landscape, majority of the landscape on site is in poor condition. So. This is the current landscape, this is along Avenue fifty. The proposed landscape plan, the applicant presented a new landscape plan to override the previously approved plan. This is just solely for his, what he owns around. The area where he owns, the applicant has already restored some of the landscape. The applicant currently maintains the landscape in the entire commercial center. And he said that he will continue to maintain the landscape as long as the tenants, the other two owners, provide their portion of the landscape. Um, let's see. In regards to the landscape, we also. Have not yet approved this landscape, which if you see on this slide, this is what he has proposed. We haven't approved this landscape plan yet, we do have. A couple of issues with them with the landscape plan, we would like more variety of colored plants, also more trees. Just we're gonna work with him. Also. Let's see. Um. Yes, so we have added a condition that we're gonna bring all of the, all of the owners together. So they can actually work together to bring this, this landscape plan or the landscape bits of compliance, so code enforcement is working on that. Okay. Fancy. So. The applicant is required to install a block wall directly behind the property. Currently, it has a wrought iron fence, the applicant would like a time extension to build block, the block wall after the certificate of occupancy is issued. So. Directly behind these two buildings, he would be required to build a block wall. The hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, eight AM to six PM, Sunday, eight AM to two PM. And in this case, this is a signage that he has proposed. Which is a halo lit. Sign, and I just kinda wanted to show you an example of how that looks like, and that's. This right here, and we did talk about. How he's gonna implement the signage in this whole building that he owns, and so everything's gonna be black. For all the businesses in this, the first property was a shop one, and they're all gonna be halo lit and black. So conclusion, the staff would recommend that the planning commission approve conditional use permit three sixty-five. With the findings and conditions and the resolution. So that's the end of my presentation, thank you so very much, and the applicant is actually here in case you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can start off with them. I noticed that some of them are two hundred and fifty square feet and some ninety-one square feet, how many of the ninety-one square feet that seems often small?
There half and half, so half of them are larger. And half of them are. Smaller. So they all, they all vary from size, from ninety to two sixty-five, so they're not just cut right in the middle. There's different variations.
How many at ninety-five, I mean, how many at eighty-five? The units at ninety-five.
What's proposing the plan for?
This, this we have all kind of varying sizes, none of them are necessarily uniform, so each one is.
It's a general idea, how many can, five?
I said, half them are.
Is that out of which?
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt, if he needs to comment, if he could be on the microphone so that we could record it.
Maybe we tell the presentation's over and then we can.
Okay. Whatever.
Okay, yeah, so like he was mentioning, like half of them were the smaller size. And then half of them are the larger size, and I'm sorry, I didn't actually count the ones that are just ninety. Um. Looking at the site plan. It would be. I think he has like one or two that are ninety and the rest are like above ninety, within the hundreds, yeah.
Yeah, seconds two.
Hmm.
And then the agreement with the landscape between the owners. And the city, you guys are working on?
Yeah, with code enforcement, yeah, the, the two owners from CVS, I know that code enforcement has been trying to reach. Corporate and the property management company and they're unresponsive. So is. The, the, the other owner, which is, which is Shane Astani. And the property management company too, they're very unresponsive, so. Hmm.
Chair, one of the standard conditions that we talked about in the past for the planning commission is. Ensuring that the CCNRs are modified so that the city is identified as a third party beneficiary. So that the landscape is maintained in a first class condition, so that would apply to the property he owns. We're trying to have this applied to all the properties, so we need to work that out. But at least the condition is worded so that he's gonna have to make sure that his part is in a first class condition.
But I think, I think it's real important, because you know, we got similar problems throughout the city where these guys are non-responsive and, you know. Landscape dilapidated.
Yeah, so yeah, we have.
At least we're keeping meetings up on, on the landscape that looks nice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And some quick question for staff as well, you mentioned the block wall and obviously his, his. He. Well, he, his portional, what he owns is the perimeter of the property, right?
Hmm.
And so.
Yeah, so if you saw the, the image that Eva showed, it would just be the portion of the property line that's right behind the two buildings. And not even behind the retention basin, that's all the way at the corner, because that belongs to someone else.
Right.
So. So it would be incomplete block wall. So that means the future, when the other two paths develop by Shane Asanti, we would need to condition the rest of the block.
It's serving. You know, I, I, I do appreciate staff. But I'm wondering if, you know, just for the sake of, of. Um. Of dollars being spent at, you know, during the current time, and I, and I, and I understand he, he would like them. For the extension of, but I wonder if we could be deferred, maybe he could possibly pay into. A pot there or a bond. If possible, right? Just because of the timing of these things, right, so I, I rather have some continuity. As, as opposed to a wall be half-built, right, that's aesthetically for me. I'd rather see something like that versus, you know, let's get half the wall up and then we can't get the other, the other owner to. To go in on it, maybe he can, you know, go into a bond and do something that way. And then when we get a hold of the other developer. And then call his attention, say, or even all three of them, because all three will benefit. From having that block wall. You know?
One, one option could be, this is a conditional use permit, right, so that means that that CUP will. Continue to be effective with the life of the salon. So you could add a, a condition, I guess. With some kind of timing with construction of the wall, you could do that, right, and if it's not constructed by that time. Then the planning commission could choose to revoke the CUP if it's not done, right? So that's one thing you could do, maybe the bonding, I, I wouldn't recommend maybe more of the timeframe.
Okay.
For the block wall to get done, I just think it's easier, but, but whatever the planning commission, I think those are some of the options that you have.
So how are we working the landscape agreement with all three?
The landscape agreement would have to be in place, well, the landscape agreement for hit his property. Would need to be in place before the CUP is considered effective. Now, the, the. If he can get an agreement with the rest of the property owners, that's not gonna keep his CUP from moving forward, so it's. It's only that he acts in good faith to work with the other property owners. And we are trying to bring in the other property owners to. To make sure that the landscaping is in, in good condition, right, code enforcement does have. Hasn't been out there.
Now, with, with their landscape. What, what we're asking the, the, his neighbors to do is to. Come back in what was previously approved, right? Versus what we would like to see moving forward. Because.
Yeah, we, we, I can't find the original approved final landscape plans, so that what you saw in the site presentation is the conceptual landscape plan.
Yeah.
That's where we have to go off, it's pretty accurate in terms of the placement of trees. So what we're also trying to get. This applicant is to make sure that the, the trees that were originally proposed are also on his plan. So with the plan that you see today, that's not even gonna be the final plan, so we still need to work with him to make sure that. There's the adequate trees that were originally. Proposed for the shopping center.
So we're gonna legal counsel and actually stipulate that these conditions be. Enough in the CUP.
Yeah, these conditions concerned, they'd be added to CP, if you wanted to delineate what conditions you would like to add, we can find a way to think.
We're talking about the block wall and the landscape and.
But in terms of what, what specifically regards?
Okay, so I guess, just. You guys can take care of it, Steph can take care of that, but I think it's important that we do that because we've seen so many that come, come to us. You know, landscapes, just to, they get neglected and they're not keeping up with their agreement.
Yeah, I mean, if the planning commission wanted entertaining the timing condition, it would just be the construction of a block walls required. Behind shops one and two, but deferred. According to a certain time that you want, so you know, does the planning commission want six months, a year, two years, three years, it could be whatever type.
What's occurring right now, what, what do you have to do like?
What does the commission say?
Or.
Or that, for the block wall.
For the block.
Does it have a timing?
It doesn't have a timing, we really, we're gonna leave it up to planning commission to.
So let, let me ask this question, the three owners. Again, it goes back to no response, there just haven't been a response.
The two other.
I mean, or I guess my question is historically, you know, because have you ever been able to find a midpoint? And so that other owners, you know, come to an agreement and something like this?
Not for this site, not, we haven't tried, so.
What about other sites, has it been successful?
Other sites.
Or Fountainhead Plaza's a similar situation, right, so. That's where the Walgreens is located, right, and so their job is, so there's different ownerships of McDonald's, Taco Bell, Walgreens. All the, the Fountainhead, right, it's almost like buy, so they do have. CCNRs, right, covenant restrictions, and it's agreement between all the property owners in terms of how maintenance is gonna occur. And so we haven't seen those CCNRs for the site, we don't even know how it's structured. But the idea is that, you know, in those CCNRs, it should have maintenance responsibilities. What we wanna make sure is that we could also be a third party to maintenance on the other parcels that he doesn't have control, right?
Again, I, I go back to Vice Chair Hernandez. Thoughts is that, I, I don't think it's fair that we're. A new business owner that obviously at the moment is trying to develop something new. They develop their, their beautiful area and then everything else again goes back to. This is not uniformity there, right, and so. Again, I, I guess my, my thought is, I, I, where, where do we pull at good faith, right? Good faith only goes as far, and at the end of the day, these properties are within the city, again, I know they're owned by someone else. But. I guess it amazes me that as a city, we, we don't have guidelines. To not impose, right, but in some ways. You know, meet with someone and then have a, have a professional conversation to know what's possible, right? And then off of that, make a determination so that it makes sense for the potential business owner that this thought makes sense for them. Right? So that, that, that's my feeling that. We're trying, and again, all that area is growing, or those, those homes in that area are gonna grow all the way to. Van Buren, the homes are gonna go back, I mean, all that area is gonna become a pretty centralized, you know. Some are of each other, however you wanna call it, but I, I think it's, it's just gonna expand and. I think having, continue to have these conversations about landscape and what's. Hasn't been possible and hasn't been possible, and I know, we haven't been here all this time, but I think. You know, these are things that we can remedy moving forward through this, this commission, that we need to have that because we want our city to look. You know, be appealing. And important to that, but I guess for me is, how much can we put on the potential business owner? Where they really don't have control of the other two business owners. Coming up to the plate and, you know, seeing consciously that at the end, they're gonna get a benefit of this, right, and so. That's, those are my thoughts, I just, I, I have a mixed emotion about that.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a strong condition because the other owners could say we don't wanna do anything, right? So then what we're left with as a city is code enforcement actions on. The areas that the other two property owners own.
So if that happens, what, what quarter important, there, there's still that timeline, right? That quarter for, it's not like you have to do it tomorrow, there's still a legal procedure to do that in the backend, right? Is there, do, do you have an idea what that timeline looks like? Let's say, what, I'm thinking worst case scenario, what is worst case scenario? If these two owners do not wanna budge. How long would it take, you know, if we decide to approve? This, this opportunity, how long would it take? Uh, this uh, this opportunity, how long would it take so that? The property is up to par, uh, so that it looks.
Um, that I can tell you, um, that the, have the current person manager here, but there would be the, the regular noticing to the property owners, right? And they'd have to be able to respond to the notices that they receive. And if there's no compliance, then there's a, there's eventual point where it becomes. Um, something that we refer to city attorney's office, right? So, yeah, I mean, it could take a long time, right? It can take more than six months if there's no compliance.
Director, um, my other concern would be dust mitigation, right, to his property to the north side boundary. Where that, where that wall would, you know, benefit, right, from? Dust coming in and impacting the landscape there, right? And so I think. Perhaps if, if we do um defer the block wall, then the landscape's kind of shot per se, right? Because it, it does blow in that area. And so I, I would, I would strongly suggest that we consider um instead of the three eights rock. Maybe we go three quarter, right? Just because if we defer one, you know, it does no good to, you know, or landscape per se. If that's the case, I'm gonna work a deferment. Now, if we go ahead and install the wall, while that wall acts as a screen per se, right? Protects, does protect the landscape. So. We, we do have some things to decide here. Um, as, as a commission, right? If we want to defer a wall. What that does as far as uh dust mitigation and then. Secondly, if we, if uh we defer it, you know, do we, you know, ask the. The, the applicant to install perhaps, you know, larger rock in his landscape.
And commissioner responds to that, um, Eva showed the slide of what they're proposing landscape plan. I believe it showed three eights.
Yeah.
Which is smaller than the three.
Yeah. If we go three eights, right, if it blows in that area, that, that, that rock is covered, you know, within weeks, right, versus it's gonna.
So if you want the three quarters and you wanted for the project, I just recommend including that as part of um. Here um deliberation on the item.
You said three quarters, right there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. Similar to another situation we discussed.
What are we talking about? What's the distance of block water?
Maybe like about hundred fifty feet.
Yeah, fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just what he would be responsible for.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I, I think one of the other things to think about is what that means, right? If there's one block wall there, there isn't the project that was anticipated to the north of the site that was gonna be, what, hundred sixty? Homes that was.
Yeah, hundred and sixty seven homes.
Homes that was entitled, right? So once you have the homes over there, you know. Um, you know, on the other thing that to, to wait is that. You have a block wall on the other side, you know, what happens with the block wall could stay out there for a long time. You know, sometimes there's kind of some issues, right? So, you know, that's another thing to, to wait, like in that decision. Um, and so what was also anticipated was that there would be a connection between that residential neighborhood. And the commercial center. So there would be a walkway between those two shops buildings. That would connect to the neighborhood, right? So I think our intent is that there would still be. Opportunity for a walkway if there's a neighborhood that's eventually built to the north.
Mm-hmm. I think that's in the schematic, right? I think it shows a path right there.
On the landscape plan, the original landscape plan.
Right above the landscape section, we see parking availability point of access. And that's what you're discussing for.
Is there a ratio that we could work out based upon like his lease agreements? Like the block was contingent upon so many spaces being filled or occupied, et cetera?
Uh, you, yeah, you could do that. It just becomes a little bit harder to track. I, I would just suggest if, if, if the plant commission did want the, the wall condition to remain, then the better. It would be easier to just do something based on a timeframe.
Do we have a motion to amend the condition?
Do you have any comments?
Any comments, man?
You wanna hear from the applicant?
I think we should.
Okay, yeah, wanna. But open up.
Open up the public hearing in as much as that time.
Open up the public hearing six twenty-nine. That's it.
Good afternoon, commissioners and chairs. My name is Christian Cortez. I am the son of Humberto Cortez, the applicant and building owner.
No.
So um. And we've been talking about all these issues about block wall and. But the block wall and the landscape and just a little bit of my ma- background, I'm actually a landscape contractor, former golf course superintendent. So since I bought the property, um, the owner doesn't know exactly what's going on. I just emailed him because um. The property management has been non-responsive. And so you know, if, if you know the area, I actually been taking care of the whole area, not getting paid or anything because I, it's for my interest to look good. And so we may maintain it, um, not just the landscape, but the trash, graffiti, uh, policing the place. Um, I fix the lights myself. I paid for the, for the electrical bill, so restoring electricity. I did all that. I restored all the electrical because it was vandalized for the two buildings. That's how I bought him. And so um. We know, I, my plan is to beautify the whole area. Don't get me wrong. I even mentioned to them that if uh, for whatever reason later. I wanna beautify that because I take care of shopping centers and I know how important that is for the shopping center. So that's, 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 that's a very um big priority for me. And I have a great record in the valley. If you look me up, Logan Landscape. Um, that's one thing. On the block wall, you know, I mentioned, I had mentioned to them also that. You know, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it. I think it's a good thing to do it. Uh, right now there is like a chain link pass with like these little strips and nothing comes through. Um, I know that Mr. Astani uh had the lot in the back for sale. He received two offers. Not too long ago and then he took it down because he thought it was too cheap uh from D R Horton and Mezer. So I think they're waiting for the price to come up a little and then they're gonna put it up, up for sale again. But that's what Mr. Bartle told me. Of the realtor that represents both of us. Uh, so I perceive hopefully that shopping center, that house and project being built hopefully soon. Um, and so I, all I was asking because uh the money, you know, I'm just a landscape contractor. And, you know, we done good things with, you know, what we have invested. And, but I don't have all the money, so I was hoping that we could. Uh, maybe once the units are, are leased, that we can build a portion of our wall that we have to build. And if, if the project doesn't come to fruition, then we'll come through it with, you know, hopefully have a little bit of time, so we can make a little bit of money to make that project happen. That's what we're asking for.
So what's the timeframe you're looking at in terms of?
Well.
It's the general.
Right now, for example, on the shop one building, we have two, you know, it's taken a long time because of COVID and that's why I'm bottom. So we have two um. Spaces leased and then we have two others that just came on board. So we have four out of seven. And, and we know that there's gonna be a lot of uh demand for this spaces because of what's, you know, we've been. Looking into this for thing for not just now, for ten years. I actually take care of shopping center where they have one. That's where I got the idea. From them. And there's a lot of demand for this type of business and I, I would think that in. In a year, we should be full. We have a similar uh space in publisher, but we have just spaces. Uh, seven spaces and it's not for, you know, something similar. And it didn't take like, you know, about six to eight months to fill up. So I foresee that the need, I, I looked into the uh people that. Uh, are in this business in Coachella, people that have licenses in Coachella, Indian, and all here surround. And there are a lot of people. That are, that are licensed in the cosmetology business. So I, I really foresee this thing building up in less than a year. So if we can get a year um to build this wall, that way we can have some money, you know, and our, you know. Down to um, because it depends, because it's quite substantial um amount to do the. The, and an improvement. And I just kinda have that to just cover that right now.
So do you need a years, a year start date?
A year.
Or a year ending?
A year from the time I opened the place. You know, let's say that I'm, I'm focusing, let's say I got approved this month, I'm thinking that I will have the project done in December. So from December, you know, it give me a year. Once, once I have the, the, the opening, a year from, from, from when I opened the place.
To complete the block?
Yes.
Okay, so you only need a year to extend your start date of the block wall. You need a year to complete.
No, 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 no. I, I need a year from the, from the time that we opened the places, so we lease the spaces.
Yeah.
A year from there. And like that, yeah, the wall ball, the block wall won't take too long to build once, once we get it going, yeah.
So from the grand opening, from the starting. That starts and then that's when you have three hundred sixty-five days that you're asking to complete the walk.
Yeah, I say that in December, I have the grand opening the next December. You know, if you give me twelve months, I'll have it done.
That's pretty reasonable.
How many, how many slots are you projected to have in the? In your business?
Like twenty-five, twenty-five units.
Four months.
Five minutes. And, and I heard from your, the presentation that there, that there's waiting list and other.
Yes.
And again, I'm, I'm just. So why, why would you feel that it would take you a year to, to sell out and so on?
I, you know, I just wanna be, I'm, I'm saying.
You're being cautious.
Cautious because, you know, a lot of, you know, where you get your haircut, a lot of people, you know, even though they're wanting over there. It's sometimes people move to another area and they don't follow them. So, you know, I just wanna be cautious. I know there's demand. But I, you know, it's, you know, I, I don't know a hundred percent for sure.
So when it comes, it comes to your business plan, your goal is to have. To have established, you know, workers work there independently. But then are, are they gonna be, because. I've been talking about this business, uh, will they be able to side lease, you know, with other people or? How, how would you, I, I'm thinking more of, of your flow. So once I say, what's gonna come second, goes and rents. Let's say I only wanna work Mondays and Tuesdays. Can I rent that same location that, that the next five days to somebody else or?
No, no, you would be totally responsible.
Okay.
Yes, I would be controlling that. And, and uh there are some of them where there might be two people in it and they can be bought on the lease. But no, you cannot sublease.
Me?
Yeah.
So it's kind of what we've worked kinda model, right?
Yes.
Salons and.
Yes. Kind of say, as very is, you know, what people, what people pay right now for a chair in a salon, they pay two hundred fifty bucks uh. You know, a week for the chair and they don't have their own space. People here are gonna have their own space. It was, I'm not sure if any of you have gone to this. Once you go to that, you don't wanna go back to a regular salon.
Because everything's gonna be there, right?
Yes.
And every single unit's gonna be a hair salon?
No, they could be nail salon, it could be uh, uh lashes, eyelashes, it could be makeup. It's cos- cosmetology related.
Okay. That's nice.
Thank you, Senator.
No problem. And there's some more, you know, that my son can explain, uh, if you wanna know more of the business model.
Thank you so much. I certainly appreciate the uh, the handout. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the, the pitch deck and I love that I'm seeing new models, new concepts here in Coachella. So I love this whole concept of, you know. You know, having your own space for all our. You know, cosmetologists and barbers, you know, so they can have a space that they can do it licensed. You know, and not just at homes and, you know, you wanna run a good business, a clean business. For the community. So thank you for that and for your presentation. Okay.
All right, okay, we have a.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I, I'd like to motion that we approve condition use permit number three sixty-five with, with two amendments. One is to.
Commissioner, I think he had the closed public hearing first. Sorry about that.
You can close the public hearing at six thirty.
I'd like to motion that we approve the condition use permit three six, number three sixty-five with a couple, with two amendments, one being. Going to three quarter inch landscape rock. And two, to give him an extension of one year from his grand opening. For his block completion on the block wall.
Also, be, before we go to vote, Vice Chair, do you think we should also add anything regarding um the. The willing, the willingness for them to, for the owners to get together? Should that be part of this conversation?
Uh, I, I, I'm not sure if we can.
It depends on what language you wanna add, but, but yes, it would be difficult to enforce. We're trying to enforce a, a provision that, you know, says that they will try.
I think we're using the language in good faith, so I don't know we wanna, or something in regards to that. I, and I don't know if it's appropriate, just asking.
And there is, there is a condition, I can maybe read that out, uh, that is in place. And then if you wanna modify that, that I would. Go off that condition. So the, the way that condition six reads, it says applicant will work with the city of Coachella and the rest um. Should say rest of the property owners in good faith to keep landscape within the commercial center in good condition. Uh, it doesn't talk about an overall landscape plan or up, upgrade. So that's just one thing to keep in mind. It just talks about keeping it in a good condition.
You said the original graph on the landscape agreement to. You guys don't have it or Steph doesn't?
Can't find it in the record, like in the billing files. So the only thing that we could find was the conceptual landscape plan that went to the planning commission. And so comparing that, and you'll see another exhibit that shows what was actually installed. So there's an exhibit that um shows what was installed back in two thousand twelve. A lot of that changed, right, to today.
Correct. So uh. We have a motion.
There, there is a motion on the floor, yeah.
Regarding my comment.
Okay.
So no good things on the arrangement of the landscape, okay?
Yo, that's already there, right?
Second our motion.
Second on the motion.
Local.
Um, Commissioner Murillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hey, question passes.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to item three. Objective design standards for multifamily residential development zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two zero four. Recommend approval of objective design standards for multifamily residential development. Continuous to June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you.
You, and that's it.
Uh, thank you, Chair of Plant Commission. And for, for Jason, just, uh, or. Because uh, item three is actually for item four, so we'll use that for the next time. Um, just a brief background on this, objective design standards, we did receive a grant to prepare objective design standards. Working with SCAG um for multi-family housing. Uh, but this item isn't ready to be presented before our plan commission, so we recommend continuance to the next meeting. Of uh June twenty-first. And so there is no presentation.
Okay, going under item number four, the city of Coachella.
And so you'd have the, the motion to continue the item?
Oh, you are, okay. We have a motion to continue for June, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to continue this conversation to the June twenty-first.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Murillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, question passes.
Okay, going on to item number four. The public hearing calendar. City Coachella zoning consistency update, general plan amendment number twenty-three zero three. Zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two. Zero three and change the zone number twenty-three zero one includes an updated official zoning map and. The zoning ordinance for consistency with the city of Coachella general plan. City initiates continuing from May seventeen to twenty-three.
Thank you, Chair members of the Plan Commission, Gabriel Pedeskin, Development Source Director. This item was continued from the last meeting. Um, and I'll start off the presentation. Uh, we do have two other presenters with us that helped prepare. This zoning consistency uh update. Uh, so we have, I think. We have uh Simran Mahotra representing Rameen Associates and Greg Martin. Uh, who prepared the secret document related to the zoning consistency update. Uh, and they'll, they'll be panelists as part of this presentation. Uh, so. Just a presentation overview. So what we'll go over is the background, project overview. Um, the zoning code updates that are proposed, the general plan amendments and the next steps. And some background on this, and I, I kinda wanna present this very high level. Um, so also for the benefit of the community, this is. There's, there's a lot in the documents that are presented for the planning commission. Uh, um, some of you are also newer planning commissioners. You might recall a presentation I did about, uh, what are some of the important documents that the planning commission? Would use uh in reviewing projects. One of them is the general plan. Uh, the general plan is really. Our blueprint or vision document for the city of Coachella. So a lot of the projects that you consider. Or, or make recommendations for, um, you, you make. Um you you make findings for its consistency with the general plan. Um so there's the general plan document, which is text about the vision for the city. For different land uses in the city as well as general plan map. Um so this is part of what's being considered today. Uh the general plan was adopted in two thousand fifteen. Uh but what needs to be done with the general plan? The implementation document is the zoning code. So the Plan Commission also makes findings of consistency with the zoning code. Uh what didn't occur in two thousand fifteen or you know, since since then, right? Um. It's an update to the zoning code to make sure that. Our zoning map is consistent. With the general plan map. And that the zoning code is consistent with the general plan. And so this effort is is a pretty big effort because it establishes some of the zones that are required from the general plan to. Uh make the zoning code code consistent. With the general plan. Uh as far as the general plan, uh we have mentioned before, there are um several required elements of the general plan. One is the land use element. And so that is a document that the. Plan Commission will often refer to to make findings of consistency. Uh I'll often refer to that document as well, the Plan Commission. Um and that land land use element, it does talk about the different land use designations, describes them, talks about the density. That is required for those general plan land use designations. Us going through this effort of making the zoning consistent with the general plan. Does something important for our housing element. The housing element does require us to rezone property. To accommodate the the required housing. Under the regional housing needs allocation to the city. And that's a large number. I think it was like seven thousand eight hundred sixty six units. Uh so not only is this something that updates the land use section of the element, it makes the zoning consistent with it. But it's also an implementation tool for the housing element. Um in terms of the general plan, um the way it's structured, there are um various goals. In the general plan. So this is from the land use uh element for the general plan. So there'll be, you know, um kinda like a high level goal. Uh for the city in terms of how we would grow as well as policies that relate to that goal. Um and then there's the general plan map. So this is the general plan map that was adopted in two thousand fifteen. And so um so this is really like the DNA for the city. So um this general plan map was created after. Uh multiple community outreach meetings. Um. Really gleaning the information for the community members of how they wanna see Coachella grow. And so what this does is establish all the different general plan land uses that the city would like to. Or residents would like to see in the city. Uh and so you have the different land use designations that range from residential districts. To mixed use districts, to industrial districts, open space and public uses. And then we have the zoning map, right? So this is the our official zoning map today. So this map, you know, the way the colors are arranged. Really, the official zoning map should be similar to the general plan map, right? So remember, the general plan is kinda like the larger vision. The zoning map is really the implementation tool for the general plan. So there's all cities have a general plan and a zoning map. Right now, our zoning map is inconsistent with the general plan. And why that's important for the the everyday resident in Coachella? Is if someone has a property and uh a lot of times they wanna do something with their property. So if they come into our office and they wanna. Uh propose something. Um. You know, often we have to mention to them, hey, your zoning isn't consistent with the general plan. And because it is, then really you really need to do a a change of zone for your property. And what a change of zone entails. Is is a planning application that has to go before the Plan Commission and City Council. And that application is uh a little bit below four thousand dollars. So. That applicant, even if it's a small property, that could be like seven thousand square feet. Has to uh pay that amount and still go to a decision before the Plan Commission and City Council at a public hearing. So so not having the zoning code and the zoning map consistent with the general plan. Is is costing residents uh more money and more time. Uh to be able to do things that they wanna do. But having the zoning, this zoning map uh consistent with general plan. Uh. Provides a lot more certainty to residents, and that's kinda why we're doing this effort. Um as far as zoning ordinance, um if if you've. Had the chance to thumb through the zoning ordinance, um this zoning ordinance is entitled seventeen of the municipal code. Uh and so there are different chapters and there's the different zoning districts. So an example here is a residential estate zone. Is one district that we have. Um the way it's organized, it talks about the intent and purpose, the permitted uses. But it also has the property development standards, right? And that's what we use to be able to communicate to landowners. Uh what type of businesses they can own on the property, if it's allowed by right, if it's a conditional use permit. And then what the development standards are, right? Um how high can your building be? What are your setbacks? Um other things that we have um that the Plan Commission can refer to are things like we do have residential commercial design guidelines. Uh we have the Pueblo Viejo Implementation Strategy Plan. Uh and so some of these design guidelines, we can't really apply to residential development anymore. So under state law, we're we have to apply objective design standards to residential development. So um so we have the Pueblo Viejo Implementation Strategy Plan. That acts more like guidelines now. Uh but that plan did call for adopting zoning standards. So what we wanted to do with this effort. Is include those design guidelines into the zoning code, right? Um and I'll go into that in a bit. So with the Pueblo Viejo um im- um Implementation Strategy Plan. There was a recommendation for for zoning districts in the downtown area. Now, if you ever seen the zoning map and there's probably like about ten to fifteen different zones. Having four different zones in the downtown area is probably very complicated, probably not only for staff, but also for residents, uh property owners. Um you're you're having to apply for different types of criteria. Uh to the way that properties can develop it just in the small area. So we thought that was difficult. And so what we wanted to do is consolidate those zones into two zones, which we'll go into in a little bit. So on the left hand side, you can see the existing. General plan land use designations for the downtown area in that triangle. So the purple area, the dark purple area is what's considered downtown center. So that general plan land use exists today, allows for mixed use development. It allows for a very high density residential development at up to sixty five dwelling units per acre. Um. Right now, the zoning is inconsistent with it. So if you think about the development Pueblo Viejo Billis, that's a computer project at the entrance to the city. Um. The only way that that project was able to develop was through a change of zone. So the underlying zoning is commercial, which is does not allow mixed use. Projects. So you have the zoning that does not is not consistent with the general plan. And so it requires a zone change to be able to make a project work. So what this effort would do is actually create a consistent zone with the general plan designation of downtown center. Uh to make that work. So all those purple areas, downtown center, um. You know, that's what was envisioned in the general plan. On the right hand side, you can see the document or the image of the four different zones that were envisioned in the Pueblo Viejo. Revitalization plan. And you could see the purple areas for the downtown zoning don't match up. And so what we wanted to do with this effort is to make them match up, right? So there are certain blocks around the. Veterans Park that were envisioned for downtown transition type uses. Uh for higher density housing to allow for commercial businesses. Um that are not reflected in the general plan. So this is a cleanup effort to also make it consistent with that plan. Um you could see in the general plan designation too, there's blocks on Sixth Street. That are that remained residential, that don't make sense. On those blocks, you have banks, you have like the kidney center. Um you have the park behind the library that still uh has a general and designation of of residential. So what we wanted to do was clean it up, make it consistent with the Pueblo Viejo Revitalization Plan. So tho- those are all those areas that you see on the left that are highlighted and red. What we were recommending to be changed to downtown center. Or to a downtown transition zone. And we'll go into that in a little bit, but I kinda wanna explain. What we were trying to do with the general plan cleanup items to make it consistent with the. Uh Pueblo Viejo Revitalization Plan. Um so that's just a part of the update on my part. What I wanted to do is just kinda. Show uh why we're doing this, right? Uh to make everything consistent. Um. And and what it means for the everyday resident that comes to the the counter, right? Um that it would make it easier without having to pay for a zone change and have to go through the process of going to the Plan Commission and City Council. Um so I'm gonna hand uh the rest of the presentation off to um Simran, who will. Um. It's it's the same. Uh and Simran, I'll click through the rest of the the presentation. Um once you just just let me know if you wanna move on to the next slide.
Okay, um do you mind if I share my screen instead? That'll be easier.
Okay, that should work, right?
Yeah.
Let me share my screen. Uh can you see my screen?
My.
Yes.
Hmm. Yeah.
Uh Simran, we can see your screen.
You can. Okay, great. Um good evening, um. Chair Gonzalez, Vice Chair Hernandez and members of the Planning Commission. Uh I'm Simran Malhotra, Principal at Rameen Associates. And I'm very glad to be here today presenting the culmination of this um. Ten month effort to update the zoning code to align with uh with your twenty fifteen general plan. Um the purpose of this. Uh. Project is as Gabriel just um. Mentioned to prepare new or revised citywide um zones, which will implement the twenty fourteen uh twenty fifteen general plan. Um we're also incorporating the zones in the Pueblo Viejo Strategic Implementation Plan. Uh we're making a few changes to the general plan land use map so that there are no inconsistencies with the zoning map. And addressing several staff identified cleanup items. Um and these include. Either zone changes or general plan amendments which have happened over the last several years, which haven't been reflected uh on the various maps. Um we have created a new zoning code map that reflect all these changes. And then uh finally, um. We provided environmental clearance for the above changes for both the zoning code and the general plan. So the current zoning code has thirteen zoning districts. Um of these, we are um renamed. Five of these to line up with the general plan designation. So there's a one to one correspondence. So in the general plan, for example, we have um. Uh agricultural transition, excuse me, we have rural rancher land use designation. Uh the corresponding um zoning district in the current zoning code was agricultural transition. So we are ren- renaming it to be rural rancher. So we have a rural rancher zone and a rural rancher. Uh land use designation. So it's much easier for both the um the planning commission, city staff applicants to understand what's their general plan designation. And what's their zoning district. Uh so we've uh gone ahead and renamed five of these zones. Um we have made some revisions to eight uh other zones to line up. Uh with the general plan uh recommendations and policies. Uh we have created four new zones. Um. And I'll go over these in a a little bit later in the presentation. Uh we did delete one existing zone. Um and it's been instead incorporated into um the regional commercial and resort districts. And then finally, um as Gabriel described, we have consolidated and incorporated two new zones for the downtown area. From the Pueblo Viejo uh Implementation Strategy Plan. And so this table shows how the current zoning districts line up with the with the general plan. And also what the new or revised revised uh information related to it. So for example, um in the red box on the screen, you can see um. There's a new resident, new zone, urban neighborhood. Um that there was no existing zone in place. So it's a new zone uh that's been incorporated to line up with the general plan. Land use designation of urban neighborhood. So overall, there are six residential only zones. Um some are existing, others have been revised. Um the RO six thousand overlay uh zone has been merged with the. With the SN or suburban neighborhood zone. Uh we also created several mixed new mixed use zones that I will go over in detail shortly. Um two other new zones are urban employment and resort districts. Um and I'll. Des- describe these in a future slide. Um and. The two new zones for the downtown are also incorporated on are shown on the screen within the red box. Uh the neighborhood commercial zone is uh has been updated. Um it to allow residential uses. This again corresponds to what the general plan uh uh said for the neighborhood center land use designation. Um the general commercial zone has updated uses and the. Tourist commercial zone has been renamed to regional commercial um with the addition of allowing housing. And the three industrial zones are generally the same. Um and we created a new open space zone so that um. Parks, et cetera, in the in the city have an actual um specific zone uh for for them. And that lines up with the parks and open space general plan land use designation. So a little bit more detail about the four new zones. Um. The two mixed use zones are urban neighborhood and urban employment. Um and the urban neighborhood zone. Uh implements the urban neighborhood land use designation. Uh it allows for a range of densities, twenty to thirty eight units per acre. As well as limited commercial uses along the major arteries. The urban employment um is intended to be an employment focused zone, which also allows high density residential uses. The goal for both of these zones is to create mixed use neighborhoods um with amenities and jobs for residents close by. Um the resort zone, um which is also a new zone, is intended to provide um. Uh zoning for visitor serving uses such as hotels, motels, golf courses, as well as other recreation uses. A low density residential is also permitted. And uh as I mentioned, the open space zone provides for development, provides development standards for athletic fields, parks, um et cetera. Um the two downtown zones um are based on the Pueblo Viejo plan. Um. These have been uh, these are downtown and downtown transition. The downtown transition is a. Allows for the transition to lower density residential neighborhoods uh surrounding the downtown area. Um other major highlights of um the zoning code update effort include um. Limiting uh recreational vehicle storage limitations in the in three zones, the manufacturing service. Uh heavy industrial and wrecking yard. Um these currently, the municipal code does not expressly permit RV storage and the use has been for. Interpreted to be similar to um. Similar to a mini storage warehouse. The zoning code modification is proposed to ensure that a sufficient balance of revenue and employment generating uses compatible are. Uh uh with compatible with the intent of these zones. Um. The other changes are reduced lot size. Uh the suburban neighborhood includes a proposed minimum lot size reduction from seventy two hundred to fifty four hundred square feet. Um this is to align allow for the maximum density under the land, the general plan um to be built. Currently, five thousand square feet lot sizes are only permitted in um the residential single family zone. Uh with cus- custom development standards approved through a plan unit um. Uh, with custom development standards approved through a plan unit um development overlay. So instead of that. Smaller lot sizes would be allowed by right, um, which is what the city is required to do by state law. Um, we also included objective design standards for single family residential units. Um. Uh, you continued the hearing um for the multi-family and mixed use objective design standards earlier. Um, but the state city is also required to have objective design standards for single family development. So the zoning code uh incorporates uh those here as well. Um, the proposed supplemental uh standards for single family residential units address site planning, building. Standards to ensure adequate building modulation and variation of building materials. And then finally, um, the for the Pueblo Viejo Viejo plan, um. The there is a affordable housing requirement for the downtown. Uh, and downtown transition zones, a minimum of ten percent of all residential units. Um, of more than ten units must be priced for low and moderate income residents consistent with that with that plan. Um, now a quick look at the map. Um, this slide shows the updated uh zoning map. One other thing to mention here is um. The ci- parts of the city fall under the um airport land use compatibility. Uh, zones of the for the Jacqueline Cochrane um Regional Airport and um. That um, those overlay zones will govern what uses uh and. What development can occur within those zones. So the map. The ALA Commission is going to be also approving um. The the zoning map and the zoning code at their July hearing. Um, but those standards um will prevail over the zoning standards in in the city's zoning code. And on the zoning map. So in terms of this general plan amendment, um, we have made several changes. Um, these include um. Updating uh and these were necessary to make sure that um the zoning code and the general plan are consistent. Some of these are tied to changes in state law since the general plan was adopted in twenty fifteen. Um, the Vista del Agua specific plan um has been adopted since. The general plan was done for that has been reflected on the map. Um, we have updated the land use element to list that plan. Um, and will be ma- um. And then we have created a new land use designation uh downtown transition for the Pueblo Viejo. Plan recommendation. Uh, we have up create updated the map to um for several cleanup items. And um, the updated land use element that was in your package shows these changes as red lined. So the we took the twenty fifteen general plan land use element and made these changes. So that you could see what has been changed. Um, this is the map um which shows those uh previously adopted GPAs. Um, the new land use designation uh as well as the staff cleanup items. I know it's hard to see, but all the changes are in uh in a light blue uh outline. Um, in terms of sequel review, um. We prepared a memorandum of consistency findings uh for this project and this is um. Attachment three in your packet. Um, the zoning code, the proposed zoning code and general plan amendment. Is um is implementing the um the general plan that was adopted in twenty fifteen. And hence is wholly consistent with uh with the EIR that was prepared for the twenty fifteen general plan. That EIR was certified by the city council at that time. Um. So uh our team member Rincon Consultants is here. Um, and they prepared a memorandum of finding of consistency. And they found that the uh zoning code and the general plan amendments are in compliance. Or it it consistent with with that EIR. And so no additional analysis is uh is required. Um, the 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 public draft of the zoning code and the general plan amendments was released. Uh, to the public for review on um uh at the end of April. And uh since then, we held two office hours with the where we. Uh, had essentially an open house for anyone who had questions to drop in and ask any ask questions. We also, the city also received um five comment letters um that um. Uh, requested certain changes to either the map or uh maps or the code itself. Which I'll go over in uh over the next few slides. So there were three requested changes for the for the map. Um, the first is um. For the area called the Fountainhead Plaza. It's uh just north of downtown um. Along fiftieth avenue and um. Along fiftieth avenue. And the request was to allow auto oriented uses. Um, the general plan designation is downtown center, um, which does not allow for auto oriented uses. But what's been built there today is is entirely um auto related. Um, so the staff recommendation is to change the general plan land use and zoning to urban employment. To better reflect both what's there today and what's being proposed in that triangular area. Um, so our recommendation is to change that zone zoning from um. From uh zoning from the downtown PV zone to urban employment. And to change the general plan land use designation from downtown center to urban employment. Uh, the next um, the next um change is um. Is uh oversight that we uh found after the public draft map was released. And this is a cleanup item so that the zoning is consistent with um with the general plan. So the if the red outline area um is urban employment in the general plan. Um, and the draft zoning was um heavy industrial. The recommendation here is to change that zoning to urban employment to be consistent with the general plan. Uh, the third um item for the map cleanup is um also shown in the red outline. Um, the map on the left shows the general plan. It has split zoning. Um. It has um split zoning on the parcel between um. With the portion being general neighborhood and the along Van Buren, uh, we have neighborhood center. The recommendation is to update the zoning map so that it is consistent to have split zoning on that parcel. With neighborhood center along Van Buren and the rear half of that parcel be general neighborhood. Uh, there are several other uh changes that have been that are being recommended as well. Um. The first is to um. Change the front set back requirements for multi-family housing types in the general neighborhood zone. From fifteen feet to ten feet. Uh, and this would allow it to allow the zoning to better align with the draft objective design. Standards that you will uh be seeing next um at your next hearing. Um, another request from um from a property owner. Uh, was related to uh uses that are allowed in uh urban neighborhood zone and urban employment zone. And the request was to allow for daycare uses, corporate office and regional cooking services. Um, and this would accommodate uses that are already in place um on that specific property. Um, upon review of this request uh and uh. Consideration of what's allowed today, um, our recommendation is to amend the code to allow commercial daycare facilities in. Um, in generally in both urban neighborhood and urban employment zones. Uh, the next change is um in the urban employment zone, uh where the request is to allow for um. Existing multi-tenant uses on the property as a right of use instead of making these uses non-conforming. Um, on on this specific property that's a uh that's. Um, there are several uses that um include a variety of manufacturing service related uses. Uh, this uh uh this letter also requested that the manufacturing service zone. Uh, allow for towing and impound as a permitted use. Um, so the recommendation here is twofold. Um. We are not making a recommendation for the towing and impound. We don't believe that should be permitted across the entire. Entire MS zone. Uh, but in terms of the existing light industrial uses um in urban employment. We are suggesting adding language that says such uses that are in existence and permitted at the time of adoption of this. Code amendment shall be permitted to continue as a permitted use without having to uh obtain a conditional use permit. Uh, this is, this would allow for those existing uses to continue um and not have to go. Uh, either get a um CUP or become non-conforming.
Simran, maybe I can add add some more context to that. Um. Uh, so one of the letters that was submitted and and I know um the. The author of that letter is here today that could probably talk about a public comments, but um does own. A site that is along the railroad just south of Avenue fifty by the bridge. Where they do have some of these light industrial uses that are existing and they were concerned that um it would not be. Allowed under the new zoning and so that so we are recommending the change. Um, the only change that we don't recommend is the towing and impounding. Um, there is a zone that allows for that, which is the auto wrecking zone. Which is off of Avenue forty eight. But just want to give a little bit more background into that one. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Gabriel. The next change is um is related um to the uh MS manufacturing zone. Um, then the proposed draft code um has a has a limitation on. How how much of the MS zone can be um. Uh, used for RV storage. And there's a fifteen percent of the total area that's being lim- uh, that is the limit. Um, a letter received uh requests that this not this limit not be included. Uh, instead staff get uh. Would be uh allowed to decide where where RV storage should be uh allowed. And so before I get into the options, um, like to share this map first. Um. So this map with the proposed zoning map, these are the areas in the blue, the light, light blue and the. And the dark, very dark blue where uh these uses, RV storage uses are allowed. The total acreage between all of these are about fifteen hundred eighty one acres. Uh, and fifteen percent of that is two thirty seven acres. Um, based on um the city's analysis, um, to date about twenty six percent of this area. Has been either already has RV storage and um. In here built and so there's still a lot of capacity for the city to accommodate more of these uses within these zones. So having said that, um, the options um for the planning commission to consider are, one is to um. Maintain the fifteen percent requirement to um to make it more restrictive, to reduce it to ten percent. And um Gabriel may be able to speak to this uh a little bit more, but the economic development subcommittee um. Of the city council has been considering making this requirement even more restrictive uh to and potentially reducing it to ten percent. For RV storage and mini storage, given that these uses are not um uh do not generate. Either sales tax for the city or provide other benefits um that um that would be. Would be beneficial for the city. Um, a third option is to um. To limit these uses uh on parcels that do not front the major aerial uh arterials. So with that, um. And uh Gabriel, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything uh on the RV storage and mini storage.
Yeah, just real quick. And then we'll be going through these slides later on again. So if you want to. Kind of like a menu of things that are kind of before you today. So we'll go back to them and say, does this make sense? And yes or no. Uh, but as far as the RV and mini storage, so in the. In the draft zoning ordinance, it does talk about a fifteen percent cap on RV storage. But it doesn't address mini storage. And so the economic subcommittee, when they considered this this past month, they said that. Uh, maybe there should be a um, a more restrictive cap of about ten percent. With both RV storage and mini storage. So right now the zoning, the the draft ordinance says. Just specifically addresses RV storage. The economic subcommittee um wanted to include mini storage.
Next, a total of both combined?
Combined. So yeah, and sometimes they're they're proposed together, mini storage and RV storage. So combined.
So what is the cannabis industry? Heavy industrial zone?
Um, yeah, so the cannabis um, commercial cannabis is allowed in auto wrecking zone. Manufacturing service zone and the heavy industrial zone with the CUP.
So it does go under heavy?
It does.
Okay, because it pretty much depleted the wrecking part is is still a hundred and eighty acres.
So, Simran, uh, pass it back to you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Um, so the. The slide in front of you has the staff recommendation um for the planning commission um to find. Find and determine that the additional environmental review is not required pursuant to sequel guideline section fifteen eighty. Three. Um, the planning commission approved res- resolution number PC twenty twenty three dash eleven. Recommending that the city council approve the general plan amendment number twenty three dash zero two amending the city of Coachella twenty thirty five general plan. And the official general plan map. And uh finally, the planning commission approved resolution number PC twenty twenty three. Dash twelve recommending that the city council approve the zoning ordinance amendment number twenty two dash zero three of the city of Coachella municipal. City of Coachella amending the official uh zoning map and amending municipal code titled uh seventeen zoning. For consistency with the city of Coachella twenty thirty five general plan. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And uh Chair, just one more update. Um, maybe it was covered by Simran, maybe I I didn't see it. Is um, there was one letter that was received by property owners on Van Buren Street. That were requesting um that their property be um zone uh general neighborhood. And uh, and so Simran and I looked at that request and uh one of the big concerns was that. Some of the existing single family homes that exist on their properties would be considered non-conforming. So that letter. Uh, expressed that concern at the last meeting. And and so because it would be a neighborhood commercial zone. Instead of a multi-family residential zone that um. That they would be considered non-conforming. They couldn't expand their their existing single family homes or added accessory dwelling unit. Um, so we did add some language that those um existing residences. Would be able to expand and you know, which would also include um the addition of accessory dwelling units for those homes. Um, and so when we communicated that with representative for the applicant. They thought that was a good compromise. Um, but but we did hear from them today uh from Luis Lopez that. Uh, maybe that was not in that was insufficient for for them. And so they would request that the zone change be general neighborhood for their property. Uh, but also the general plan would have to change, right? So right now it's neighborhood. but also the general plan would have to change, right? So right now it's neighborhood commercial. It would have to be changed to general neighborhood, so it'd be a general plan change for their property. And so that's something the applicant can address in their comments if they'd like to, but I just want to mention that that communication happened today.
Okay, can, can we open up the public comment to hear from the applicant?
Did I say applicant? But so, well, the City of Coachella, the applicant, but one of the commenters is in the audience, if you want to hear any comments from the public. Yes, that's the intention.
Now, in regards to everyone's letter, can, is it possible to open and close hearings according to some middle of letters, right? So we can probably handle everybody's issue separately versus hearing from everybody and having to take, make notes and going from there, or how can you go about it just for some expediency?
Yeah, I think right now there's only maybe two outstanding issues. I think one of the gentlemen I know is here is David Turner. I think his main item relates to the towing and impounding issue. I think all the other issues were addressed. But I, you know, obviously, when he provides comments, he can clarify that, so I think there's that one remaining issue. As far as the other landowners for Van Buren, it's that request to change the general plan and the zoning land use from neighborhood commercial to general neighborhood.
It would be that space that we're talking about, right, that it would have, we would have to change.
Yes, yeah, I think it's, it comes out to, I believe, three parcels, but they can clarify that.
Can we hear from?
I wait up, did you open the public hearing?
Open up the public hearing at seven twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Pleasure to be here. My name is Jay Luis Lopez. I'm legal counsel for Mr. Javier Solis, who owns a one-point-three-acre parcel at forty-eight six-six-five Van Buren Street. I'm also speaking on behalf of two of his immediate neighbors, Mr. Jerry Jimenez owns a one-acre lot to the west, which is behind my client's property, and access through an easement, so he's basically landlocked with an ingress-egress easement. And then Mr. Luis Alvarado, who owns a two-point-three-acre property immediately north of my client's property, and they operate a small wholesale nursery on that property. We did submit a letter around May sixteenth where we made this argument about keeping the RM zone, which is now being changed to general neighborhood. And we did make a big argument that the non-conforming use was a primary issue. However, in speaking with my client, their, their desire is to keep the multifamily zoning, and our contention is that it is consistent with the neighborhood center land use designation, and I can point to two examples of where the city has allowed RM zoning in the city in the neighborhood center designation. One is the twenty-acre project at Northwest Corner of Fiftieth and Calhoun, where you have the Tower Market and the Borrego Health Clinic. There's a remainder fifteen-acre parcel that was zoned RM, which is now general neighborhood. Similarly, at the southwest corner of Van Buren and forty-eight, more closer to this vicinity, there was a seventeen-acre neighborhood commercial shopping center that was all designated neighborhood center, and the city allowed a thirteen-acre RM multifamily apartments project, so they changed the zoning without changing the general plan to multifamily residential. So we, we really do not want to continue this matter. We think our request is reasonable because of the unique configuration of these parcels. If you extend Avenue forty-nine west of Van Buren Street, which in the future it will be extended, you're, you're going to have at least five to six acres of commercial right at the corner, which makes a lot of sense. These three parcels are kind of sandwiched in between the big lots and, and themselves to the north and to the south, and even to the west is about thirty acres of all general neighborhood, so if you just carve out a little notch for them, that's their request, so that, that concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so you're proposing to change it to general, the residential?
General neighborhood.
From RMT general neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So Chair, that's a request to speak from David Turner.
Yeah, go ahead, David Turner.
David Turner, seven-seven-nine-three-three, Las Montagnas Road, Palm Desert. Yes. Gabriel spoke about the couple of items, the one there for the daycare, and, and thank you for that recommendation, and on the fifty percent for the RV, if it stays that, that was, that was fine. On the other property on Avenue fifty, we have about five acres there, four and a half, five acres there that we were requested some years back when, as you mentioned, cannabis at the city was coming to the wrecking yard, and we were requested to accept a lot of the businesses that we're going to be relocating out of there, and which we did. And so even though we're, we're fine with the proposed zoning that's there, or that's the proposed zoning in the future, right now it's just not in that situation to be that, and so as we have requested, we'd like to keep the existing uses that are there now and to keep them permitted for now until this develops in the future. But specifically, I've been requested by the operator there, I gave you an exhibit there on Avenue fifty, it's about an acre. It's statewide towing. They have relocated here at the request of the city and the county. And I'm going to read a little memo from them real quick that they requested, because they've been operating there for almost five years. They have a city business license, but they have not been able to get to be an exist, or be a a conforming use because they're a towing facility. But if I could just read their letter into the record, Statewide Towing and Recovery has been in business since nineteen eighty-nine. They're the largest heavy-duty towing company in Southern California, and were asked to come to Coachella from the CHP Indio by the towing officer Gutierrez because of the lack of service from other companies. statewide was given a business license from the City of Coachella for towing and storage, and still currently holds an updated business license from the City of Coachella. But the City of Coachella were to change zoning and get rid of statewide towing, it would be an immediate public safety issue for all residents of Coachella. Statewide is the only heavy company that currently tows for RSO for Coachella, which removes burned vehicles, abandoned vehicles that other companies refuse that are being lived in, and motorhomes with homeless that live inside, which relates to many issues from drugs, squatting, kidnapping, public health and safety. They clean up the city of Coachella to maintain a safer environment for the public. Statewide also covers all of the semi accidents, trucks and trailers, water trucks from farms, semi rollovers in the wind, and large-scale burn jobs of semis, so when you see our yard with motorhomes and burnt semis, this is why we go to every other tow yard in the valley, including Indio, and you'll not see anything close to what we have because we service the city like no other company can. Statewide also works hand-in-hand with Riverside County of the Mirellet Health for any type of spill from biochemical, petrol, gas, oil, et cetera. There's no other companies within seventy miles that can offer anything close to the coverage or response times. And so if we are not able to find that this would be allowed in the zone throughout, a recommendation would be to find a way that we could get them approved in this location to be an existing use before this zoning update gets implemented so that they could be an existing use in the city and remain there and and operate in the city to help the city and the county. This would be our request, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
So you've been at that location for five years as well?
They have been, yes. I, I could find the exact, they lease from us, but they've been there that long, they couldn't make today's hearing, and so they asked me. I gave you a little exhibit for second page, and so if you, it's at the southwest corner of Peter Abbott Lane and Avenue fifty, and you come around on Peter Abbott Lane and right by the city's retention basin is where they're located. I highlighted it on that exhibit. And they keep it pretty clean. They do bring in burned-out units and things, but they keep them there not for a very long period of time. They are very clean. They're one of our best tenants. They're very clean. They're very efficient. They, they run a good operation. It would be great if we could find a way to keep them there as a benefit to the city.
You're next to that rock place.
Rock place also leased from us, yes.
Can we pull it up on the map if we can have a visual, please? Sorry about that. Just to give perspective. So prior to the tenant being there, the business owner, so we didn't have any home nearby, like Indio or Palm Desert, is that what you're saying?
That's what they're saying, that, that's why they approached us, because they were looking throughout the city to find a place to locate, because the towing yards that were existing in Indio and the surrounding area wouldn't service the City of Coachella for these homeless and burned-out units and things like that, and also the county for all of their oil spills and, and bio and chemicals and all of that.
Could you speak a little bit further about the unhoused population that you're speaking of right now, when you say homeless? What do you mean by that?
I, I, I can personally, because I own the land and they lease from me, but I'd be happy to get him to respond to any questions you have and get.
Yeah, it's a bit ambiguous to me, as to what, what is being serviced with the, this is motorhomes with the unhoused population that live inside, so I'm not quite clear about what does that mean.
I, I don't know.
Hi, my name's Paula Turner, and we've been the owner of this property for about thirty years now, and statewide was not able to attend, they were outside, they couldn't make it today. And the way that they explained it to me, and maybe code enforcement could answer the question, but they are the only, when, say for an example, you have a, an RV that is a homeless person, you need that RV towed because they're parked very illegally. There is no other towing company, except for them that are permitted in the city to clean up the, the homeless and all of the vehicles that they're now upgrading from tents to RVs. And so I asked them, how many did he tow in the last year? And he said, he, I think he said approximately, he worked with the code enforcement to tow twenty RVs from the city, and there's nobody else licensed to do that. The closest is Plaza Towing, and they're not licensed to operate in the City of Coachella. They're the only ones licensed in Coachella to do any kind of heavy-duty towing.
And, excuse me, and also only for the City of Coachella or surrounding cities do they service? Just curious.
No, they service, they're one of the largest towing companies in the state of California, so they service all over the, the state, but out here particularly, they, they service this area, I think, was it seventy miles?
That's what I was asking, at the radius of seventy miles all around the City of Coachella.
Yeah, so all, all, anybody that, you know, for like highway breakdowns and things like that, they operated that, so their, their request is, they feel that because they had a, a business license, they were a conforming use, and they've been paying for that business license, and they've been there in the city and working with code enforcement, that they would just like to be considered a, one of the approved uses before the amendment. However, we can work.
Yes, yes, thank you for that information.
Thank you so much.
Anything else for that?
Any more questions?
Just maybe a comment on it. I think one of the things that was requested by Mr. Turner on this is like the planning commission can say you're not allowed to use today, right? Because it has to be a permitted use under the zone, so the only way to be able to allow the, the towing use there is if you allow it with the whole zone, so that zone is the urban employment zone. So as the planning commission, you would have to decide if you think it also makes sense that other people could request towing in, in that general area, because right now the only zone that allows it is the auto wrecking zone. Now, there's probably other ways to consider it, you know, if, if there's a limitation in, in the area, maybe there's a way to do that. But, you know, I, I think I think it shouldn't be allowed in the entire zone as a permitted use or a conditional use permit, because you might get a proliferation of some of the, the tow yards. So one way could be some kind of limitation on the geographic area, if you did want to allow it. But right now, there's not a way for the planning commission to say, okay, you're, you're allowed, because you're not, because you're actually not allowed to exist though.
Isn't there another tow company in that area also?
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think so.
But, but it's That's what their, that's what their name is, but they're not doing any towing. Currently, but they did in the past, yeah, but they're not now.
So currently you have the record.
Yes, we did at one time have two, two other towing yards there before they moved in, and, you know, it was, because we were, you know, people relocated from the wrecking yard over there, and we're, and we're doing it, and, you know, I guess doing it at the request, but not permitted, so we thought they were, but once we read the zoning and, and everything, we find out they're not, so.
But your spaces are all full there.
Yes, yep.
So possibility of another tow company coming in?
Not currently.
I have a question, so it looks like we have a Baja Boys, we have Budge Towing, we have the Lara Brothers and ABC Towing, so is
Is that, that's
Are within the area.
Budge towing is there, but they're not currently, they were towing in the past, but they're not currently doing it.
Just curious.
So is that, are they on Harrison or where they?
They're on fifty-four in Tyler, according to Google Maps.
Fifty-four in Tyler.
And Harrison is a Joe's and Armor Towing. Fifty-five, well, just at the, the Yeah.
But do they have a license too?
I don't know, but I just wanted to check with staff if there's been any review on that.
Yeah, not the other ones. I, I haven't been part of approving any tow yards, but the, the ones I'm aware of is the Delara in the auto wrecking zone.
Okay.
And so that's, that's the only zone right now that allows it as a permitted use. Chair, you also did get another request to speak from Luis Lopez on a, or another applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'll be brief. I also represent the, this, the Santa Rosa Business Park LLC. The principals are Malin Tobias and Kurt Ely, and they own the thirty-eight acres at the southeast corner of Tyler and Avenue fifty-four. And they were directed to apply for a general plan amendment to leave the industrial designation. But I noticed under the correction that it's being recommended for urban employment, and my client wanted to go on the record as being opposed to that since he has a pending application. We, we were, we were asked to continue this indefinitely because of the Housing Crisis Act, and our planning consultant, Terra Nova, was in the process of coming up with a capacity analysis to see how much residential could actually fit there, and then split-zone the property, maybe, you know, one-third urban employment and the other two-thirds industrial. So anyway, I just wanted to go on the record with that.
Hey, can we submit that in the record, Gabe, as opposing?
Yeah, it, it is in the record right now.
Okay.
By, by him making the comments.
Getting back to the first presentation by Mr. Lopez, yeah, it's kind of an awkward situation with the way the parcels got up on Mr. Jimenez's. And I don't know what else he could do with it, you know, obviously. what else he could do with it, you know, obviously, he wouldn't do put a he'd be landlocked with commercial, so I'm gonna make a recommendation that we accept the general residential is what what he's requesting. Is that is that what it was?
General, I think.
Yeah, general neighborhood. I'm gonna make a recommendation to accept the the general n- neighborhood request is uh you know, I'm sure that he's invested in that property for a lot of years and for him not to be able to develop that property is not going to be good, you know, I think that uh you know. That we should accept uh that request by so I'm gonna make a motion that we request.
What's along the lines with staff recommendation, correct?
Um staff recommendation isn't isn't to make the change. Um staff believes that we addressed um what the applicant wanted to do by making the change to allow for the existing single-family residences to be considered conforming uses, so they wouldn't be nonconforming anymore. We added language so that they would be considered conforming. That means that they can expand their homes, they can add an accessory dwelling unit. Now, um the only problem it might pose a uh potential issue for is one of the property owners that doesn't have a home on the property, it's vacant. So um they wouldn't be able to build a single-family home. They would have to conform with the general plan land use there, which is neighborhood commercial. Now, what we were gonna do is apply the consistent zoning to the site would be neighborhood commercial zoning. So that means they could do commercial. The only way they could do residential is if they um build at a minimum of five dwelling units per acre. Um and so they might not want to do that. They might want to just do a single-family home. So the benefit of the change that we were recommending would probably benefit to the the property owners that have an existing single-family residence. Be able to expand it, be able to add accessory dwelling unit, be able to take advantage of SD nine state law. Splitting their properties um administratively. Um so that, you know, that's really the challenge, you know, in in our opinion, staff that the neighborhood commercial would allow them to do both commercial and to do multifamily residential. Now, if you do make the change, um the existing general plan designation is neighborhood commercial, so you would have to change that to um a different general plan land use designation. So neighborhood commer- the neighborhood center, I'm sorry, neighborhood center um designation re- uh has a density requirement for housing between fifteen to four forty dwelling units per acre. Um the general neighborhood is not a consistent zone with neighborhood center. So general neighborhood has a density requirement of seven to twenty-five dwelling units per acre. So you would be reducing the density for that property, and so you would actually that would trigger this um Housing Crisis Act um issue where you're lowering the density um for the site. And so I think it's five acres um.
It's an acres.
No, the the total site, like the three the three total um three parcels. Sorry, I'm gonna do this math right now. So essentially, on that site. Essentially, at the maximum density, two hundred units would be produced. And so there would be a shortfall. Of a best, I guess, seven seventy-five dwelling units. And so I believe under that, would we have to make findings? For the lost and potential units?
There's an existing property already.
I'm sorry, uh Simon, did you want to add something?
Yeah, um I was gonna add that um for the city to make that change to lower the capacity on those sites, and the city at the same time needs to find another site within the city um that can accommodate the shortfall. So somewhere else in the city, upzoning needs to occur at the same time. And if I may share my screen for a second, it'll be helpful to see these sites on a map. So it's these these three parcels here. And um if this changed to general neighborhood, you have neighborhood um commercial on the north as well as the south. So there'll be just uh these two small, three parcels in the middle, which are the general neighborhood, which along Van Buren uh won't create a consistent uh use along along its length.
So we have to consider um the vision, the growth of community as well, right? Because that will definitely be impacting.
There's not been existing house on.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But but we're just looking at the other side of the coin. I understand how important I I empathize.
About.
Yeah. Absolutely, that's tough.
Consideration.
So how many houses do we gotta relocate? Or find room for us?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. We can do multifamily, we can do what can we do then?
Yeah.
What's what's the solution? Put them on fifty the right here?
Well, the option two is AD ADUs too, I mean, so they have um on the one that's already pre-existing, so.
Yeah, so there would have to be another site located where we we change the the zoning in the general plan land use to um higher density zone.
And have we considered in the area? In the area, like, for instance, if we decide to go on the side on the side of the applicant. Have we considered uh where we may place these seventy homes?
No, haven't thought about that yet. So thi- this just I we thought the issues were resolved in in discussion discussion with the representative um a few days ago. And then we received a call that there was a concern that they they still wanted the general neighborhood designation on the property.
My 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 question is, and I'm totally with you, Chair. When you buy a property, um obviously you you have the authority of willingness to evolve within that property. But obviously, the city is growing, right? And so i- is there a way to ask, you know, when do they really gonna build or you know, what what is the the plans to build the obviously, ninety fifty crazy enough. But, you know, I guess, I guess, is there a way to but uh a a claw that they should build by then, that they don't, then it goes to what the city, you know. The city can adjust. I mean, I I know it's not what a a landlord wants to be told when they're supposed to build, but the the city is involved. And there's there's other situations like right right next to it, you know, you got all that those homes that were never built, right? The streets are there, we can see them there. And and obviously, that's that's another conversation, but I'm just thinking a lot of that though. You know, going back to um responsibility. One is you go, maybe we can do that, I don't know.
Well, it's like, you know, how are you gonna, you know, we have a bunch of vacant property in Coachella that potentially are gonna have houses on them. So how do we enforce or implement, say, oh, you have to build? You know, whatever the houses you're 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 saying when that'll fit on a piece of property. There's already an existing property. There's three different parcels on that on that parcel there. So one's already got a house, the other one is a small business. And the one in the back, you know, basically your landlord, so what are you gonna, you know?
Chair.
There's a small even material.
I have a question. It's also like you're familiar with um, you know, this group, and so is there any consideration for them to sell in the future or anything where they're planning like long-term? You know?
Well, I I don't know how long they've had it. I mean, the gentleman's here, we could
Oh.
He could answer some questions. Then we open it back up to public.
Um yeah.
Okay, let me open it up. Uh let's open a public comment at seven fifty-four. Can we hear from uh the gentlemen's or?
Good evening. Chairman, Vice Chair, commissioners, uh Javier Solis, I live in an existing home. Uh one point three acres, four eight six six five Van Buren Street. Lifelong resident of Coachella, born and raised here. Uh also former chair of the planning commission a few years ago. So uh I uh have a profound respect for the hard decisions you guys are making, because I also was sitting there. Um in terms of my family being a fourth generation family of the city of Coachella. Um we grew up in tough times. Back in those days, a lot of families did, you know, we worked our way up, we worked hard as a family. Um the so-called American dream of owning your home, also owning a good little piece of land. Uh I happened to purchase this existing home in two thousand and nine. Uh along with raising three sons as a single father. Looking at this property that had an entire acre of street frontage with the home being in the back. With the dream of building ADUs for my sons. Uh I only found out about all of this process because I decided to come in three weeks ago to start inquiring about permits for the ADUs. There was no notice sent out in the mail. Uh I also found out that sometime back in twenty fifteen I lost my agricultural transitional zoning somehow. Again, no public notice. Uh so there's a lot of dynamics going on here, but at the end of the day it all boils down to the fact that I bought this property with with dreams in mind. With hope for my family. For some of you who might have been here or been around back in two thousand and nine or or for the last twenty twenty-five years. That property was slowly being developed. When I purchased it, it was a house with not a single tree or a single shrub. If you go by there, you'll see the 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 sweat and the uh the sweat equity and the uh I what I call the blood, sweat and tears that I put into it. Or my family. With the ultimate goal of getting those casitas and having my sons live on that property. And the fact that I've become a new grandpa that only further extends my desire to to continue with my family dream on my property. Having this zone change will decimate that plan, that idea, that dream. Hey. I think I can answer your guys' question in advance that I have no plan to commercialize. There's no desire. It's not about making money. It's about keeping my roots, my family, and keeping them in Coachella. Proud resident. Uh all I ask is that you keep an open mind and and consider that that there's a people factor in the city of Coachella. And over time, we tend to forget that. Hey. We need to remember that as much as Coachella is growing, we're not going to be a Temecula. Hey. We know that. We're not going to be anything similar to to the inland empire. We're Coachella. We're original. There's a lot of uh a lot of our family roots, as I can pretty much assure each and every one of you have your family roots embedded in Coachella. As we look at all of these future plans, and yet I I I agree with growth. I I do, wholeheartedly. Hey, like I say, I've seen the growth. Fifty-five years old, born and raised here in Coachella. Hey. I left Coachella just to go in the military. I came back to Coachella, because that's where my heart is at. Hey. So again, keep an open mind and 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 understand that as an owner of that existing residence I've spent almost all of my life working towards the pinnacle of three weeks ago, coming in and pulling my permits so that I can start my that goal. Only to find out that we can't give you permits because we're rezoning. So kind of said my piece. I appreciate you guys listening to everything. Um and I'll let my neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Hi, Jerry Amelis, uh former city of uh Coachella employee, former superintendent of sanitation. I have had an interest in that property for about twenty-seven years. My vision for that property, again, was to put roots down. When I retired, I recently retired about a year and a half ago. And I'm gonna be starting the building process to build a single-family home there. Uh again, it's convenient that it's close to my cousin. You know, we're really tight, so again, at the end of the day, it's all about family. Uh and thank God that my cousin is well-spoken, so he said a lot of the key points that I wanted to hit on. And I know you guys have a tough decision and the city has a vision. But again, it's about being fair. Uh I've had that property, an interest in it for twenty-seven years. And I'm not gonna commercialize it. In fact, the property would probably be worth more if this zoning went into effect. But again, I don't want to make money. I want to build my house there. I want to build what's there. And as my cousin stated, we're long-term Coachella people, want to keep it real and keep it a Coachella. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Hello. Uh my name is Luis Alvarado. I'm the neighbor. Um my parents have had their property there in the back of Mr. Javier Solis for at least forty years now. And, you know, fortunately my uh, you know, my dad, you know, they're getting older, they're in their eighties. So they're, you know, in the process of, you know, seeing what they're gonna do with the property. Luckily, um my mom has fallen on our times, you know, she's she's getting, she's has a slight case of dementia. So for us, I just got married like five years or three, four years ago, you know, and all this COVID stuff happened. So that was my plan is to build a house there already, you know, because I love my parents, I want to be there with them. And now that, you know, what happens, what's going on with my mom, it even makes me more want to be there. So for me, that's my plan is to build a house. And I'm, you know, I just wanted to start doing it in the last you know, talk to my dad, talk to my dad mostly. Um and he's like, yeah, you know what? Let's go ahead and do it, son, you know, and luckily, you know, it's, I guess, it's fate. He he went out there three weeks ago, whatever, tried to get his permits. And he kind of told me about it, and I was like, oh, shoot. Well, thanks for letting me know, you know, definitely I'll you know, if I have the spring, you know, for the attorney or whatever, you know, I'll do it, you know, so that's my plan. And that's I want to start building, so that's why you know, I want this, you know, stay you know, and uh what is it? Not not commercial or whatever we're trying to do, you know? So that's kind of just my my word on there for my speaking on it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Solis.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's comments.
Um Chair, if you're done hearing, uh public hearing, I'd recommend closing it then.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Close the public hearing at eight oh three.
So a question for staff, what is how's that corridor lining up currently um with developments on forty-eight and Van Buren, the hotel, etc. Uh what what's our ultimate vision there? What we look to accomplish there?
So when 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 the general plan was adopted, you know, I wasn't here, but I I anticipated the idea was that there would be commercial along Van Buren Street. Uh when I was here, I was part of the general plan land use change for parcel to the north that would change it to commercial. Um so the city, you know, would like to see the hotel site, you know, be purchased and developed into what was intended. On the other side, on the west side, um you know, there is commercial zoning there. Um there's a doctor that owns property that's intending to build a commercial center. Um that they presented designs to the city. Uh they haven't submitted their formal application yet. Um to the south of that, I'm not sure what the property owner wants to do, and that's the property owner between um them and and uh Dr. Dr. Costa, who is a local physician. Um the property to the south of them would also have that commercial designation. We haven't heard from them about their interest in developing the frontage of their property. Um so there is one commercial center that we know that is in the works. Um and that's something that Dr. Costa is working on. Um, the property on the corner, the south west corner of Van Buren and Avenue forty-eight, there are no plans for that site at this time.
So there's some consideration on Dr. Costa's property or commercial use to, you know, multifamily commercial use on his property?
Uh, well, he also owns the back part of the property, so if you saw on the the general plan map, in the back of the property, there's like the residential portion. And then the front, it's the neighborhood commercial, which kind of makes sense, right? Uh, the frontage of Van Buren Street would be commercial. So I think for when our discussions with the doctor, the rear portion, they would develop that some future date. He's interested in developing the commercial in the near term.
Yeah, so there's a pre-existing house between uh, Solis House and forty-eight. It's been there for a long time also, so that's uh, another property that single-family is pre-existing. So we decided to Okay, so uh, the motion, I'm gonna make a motion to uh, rezonate to general, general residential. That's my motion.
Are we doing, sorry, I have to ask the question, are we motioning for every single thing or for the whole entire? I mean, that's
Um, yeah, I would recommend going off of the staff recommendations and adding what you mentioned, Chair, to um, so what you're asking, so there's three recommendations. One is to make the sequoia finding. Number two is to approve one of the resolutions recommending approving the general plan amendment. Um, changing the general plan map, because we would have to do two things. Number two, change the general plan designation for their site to general neighborhood. And then under number
Requesting generally, exactly.
Yeah, and then under number three, changing the zoning map to also be general neighborhood. So so you would have to go forward and say, um, recommend approval. Uh, well, find determined that it's that the proposed uh, resolutions are consistent with CEQA. Approve the resolution for the general plan amendment with the general plan uh, change at the request for general neighborhood.
How about general neighborhood and then uh, the recommendation by staff, item number one, two and three, whatever we need to.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
So yeah, so you'd be approving the resolutions with the modifications as requested by um, um, Mr. Lopez. So I think that would be sufficient. Uh, but but there's a few things that we'd like to do uh, before your approval. We'd like to go through some of the um, slides that Simran mentioned, because there is some direction that we need from the planning commission and a lot of the other items.
Okay.
So just point of clarification, so if let's say, um, you know, you motion to adopt the 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 change of the to GN uh, to general neighborhood, would it be that that simple, that parcel area or would it be that entire area in purple?
Just It's in three parcels that were there reference. Is that correct?
I I just want to be clear how, because I'm I like to see the visual.
It's not the whole general area, it's just that
Yeah.
We're referring to.
Yeah, I just, I just want to
Yeah. And how does that, how do we solve our arena numbers now? Like, how does that impact those arena numbers?
Um, it
You know, seventy-five homes.
That's my follow-up question as well.
It wouldn't affect our site inventory for housing element, um, but it would reduce the capacity for housing on that site as envisioned the general plan. So the maximum density envisioned on that site was uh, forty-two units breaker. So there is no requirement that they build forty-two units breaker on their property, right? They could do a commercial project. The the challenge here is that state law by the state of California has made it difficult for us to change land use, right? So whenever we're decreasing density, it has to be made up somewhere else, right? And we have to make those findings. And so um, in the past, it was easy just to change your zone. No concern if you were changing density, no concern, but with state law, it's made it more of an issue where it's kind of handcuffed city in terms of making those decisions. And so we have to replace that density somewhere else in the in the city.
So how many is that Dr. Costa proposing a building? Has he aimed with a map here or?
Uh, well, he's proposing to do a commercial center just on the front edge.
But the back, back part of the
Yeah, um, so on on the on the slide that they brought up is the Van Buren Street, and I'm not sure. Yeah, so they're showing Van Buren Street, um, their properties are the three properties that are clustered together in purple. So go a little bit north, right? Oh, that's a little bit south, right there. So if you did that, that becomes that orange color, that's similar to what's behind it, which allows for housing. So you would have, you would continue to have neighborhood commercial to the north and neighborhood commercial to the south. But those three par- properties would end up being that uh, beige color.
Okay, so it just go notch on the map.
It'd be, it'd be notch on the map, yeah.
Answer on
We gotta pay some money to redraw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to pay some money to redraw.
Um, since since there is expressed interest in adopting um, that land use change, the only thing I recommend, we may have to do some follow-up on this with respect to state law in terms of upzoning somewhere else. Can we do this subsequent to this meeting? Well, because we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, my interpretation would be that so it's based on the action as a whole, right? So you can't adopt any action that would result in a net loss to residential capacity. Here, the action as a whole would be the whole consistency update. So the determination would need to be made, I, if there's a surplus or if there actually is a loss. It would be the action as a whole. So I I think if I remember correctly, we anticipated some surplus overall from the consistency update. But this might chip away at that or get rid of it depending on what the numbers are.
Would would they be able to chip away at the surplus then?
Boy, it would naturally trip away at the surplus because you're adopting the whole, you're adopting the whole, it's the action of of the planning commission that's that's at issue.
Okay, um, so let me, I'll I'll, it's also a question for our general plan, um, zoning consistency consultant as well. Um, so it looked like there was gonna be a surplus potentially of three hundred twenty-six units. If I'm if I'm not mistaken, Simran.
Yes, that's right. And I think the shortfall here is seventy-five if the if the change did occur, so that's enough to cover that change.
Would be the total there, okay?
So in five acres, uh, instead of two hundred units, they'd be able to do uh, um, twenty-five, oh, one hundred and twenty-five units. I mean, this is a theoretical exercise as far as the state is concerned, what actually gets built isn't really the issue, it's what's allowed by the general plan and zoning. So it would go from a maximum of forty units an acre to twenty-five units to the acre. So instead of two hundred units, you could build one hundred and twenty-five. And the difference is seventy-five units, and that can be covered by the current sur- surplus that that we have in the
Are those seven thousand?
Available.
Sure, five thousand square meters.
It doesn't
So, um, so Chair and Plan Commission, a lot of this is pretty complicated in terms of under state law. And we are gonna have a study session on this next time, so we can explain this a little bit more. Um, but it looks like there's probably a way that this can be recommended for approval. Uh, what it would do is chip away at um, the expected increase in capacity. Uh, and so the increase in capacity is created because there's added downtown general plan land use added around like Veterans Park and down Sixth Street. And so that's where we're experiencing the increased capacity. So is that something that um, the the three property owners could potentially benefit from? It looks like it is, and so um, i- is there anything that we would have to follow up after this meeting if if they took that action?
I don't believe so. So it sounds like, it sounds like you currently have an estimated surplus of three hundred and twenty-five units and the reduction in the intensity of the use by changing it from the current RM multifamily residential to the neighborhood commercial designation is a difference in a map in fifteen dwelling units per acre. And I think it was like a five acres total, right? So it's like about a loss of seventy-five or so units. So it would just reduce the surplus to around two fifty.
So, okay, so then you could consider approving the action without having to rezone another property that which was my concern that we would have to do that with the section.
However, we can technically, so repeat that one more time, because you lost the rate there.
Um, yeah, so there there there's analysis that um, that Simran developed with, you know, all the changes that we're supposed to make in terms of what would be the increased capacity with all the general plan amendment changes, right? So that capacity increases, so there there would be a potential to increase housing units in the city by three hundred twenty-five units. So if someone was proposing to reduce their zoning at the same time, that's what they're proposing to do here. They can chip away at that surplus. So it's kind of like you're making it up
Yeah.
by what we're doing here with this action. Hopefully that makes sense. We are gonna have a study session next week, next Plan Commission of Office.
Okay. Do I need to make the motion with uh, staff recommendations?
Yes, um, you can make the motion and then we're gonna request to go through some of the requested, um, we're requesting your direction on some of the changes that were identified in some of the slides. So if you want to request the motion and then, um, and then we'll go through some of the slides. Simran will take you through to see if you want to make a decision on some of these items. So
One more question just before we proceed, um, so if we do decide to side, um, on the side of the property owner, obviously, we're gonna have a notch there, it's gonna be anomaly, right? So they'll have these wrenched out homes in the center of commercial areas. Right? And now what would be the process? Obviously, come back and rezonate the area if they they do decide to sell. I would have to go back in.
Yeah, it it's an easier thing for them to do, because they don't have to do it. There would be increasing density with the neighborhood commercial zone. So it would be easier for them uh, to do that in in the future. But they would have to come back with the change of zone application, the general plan amendment application.
Yeah, I just want to give everybody, you know, the way out, right? That's probably the best thing to do, be fair about it, give the city, put the city in the best position, maybe build out and fill out the area, give them, if the, if the over and same ability, right? Like, the vision on anyone.
So, um, if we can get your direction on some of these slides before you make that final uh, motion. So that way we can get the direction on what you'd like to do with some of these changes. So, Simran, would you like to go through the slides then? And then maybe we can get your feedback on, um, on uh, on some of these requests. Hi, Simran, would you like me to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yes.
So
Can you see my screen?
Yeah, I can see it. So one of the recommended changes uh, we presented earlier. Um, so Fountainhead Development, the one uh, the entity that developed the uh, shopping center with the Walgreens and McDonald's and Aldi. Uh, they have a remaining parcel, so they submitted a letter and they're like, hey, we have a concern that we can't allow for auto-oriented uses, because in the downtown center zoning district or the downtown center general plan land use does not allow for drive-throughs. So they want to allow for drive-throughs. Uh, so one potential option is to uh, rezone that whole triangle up at the at the northern end to urban employment district. It allows them to do commercials, allows them to do residential. There are equivalent densities that are allowed. So downtown center allows you to do up to sixty-five dwellings breaker, but sort of this urban employment, so they're almost kind of a match for each other. And it would allow them to do auto-oriented uses, but it also would allow auto-oriented uses in the future for areas that are kind of by where the Kentucky Fried Chicken is, the Spur and Final, uh, Pizza Hut and Family Dollar or Dollar Tree, that's there. Um, so, uh, so that's, that's a request that's before you, um, that was a request uh, by Fountainhead. So I don't know where the planning commission, they have any recommendations, they would like to make the change, or if they want to keep it downtown center.
This is, uh, go ahead.
Wow, I'd like to see it keep kept downtown center. I think we have enough traffic there. Frankly.
Yeah.
I think one of the original proposals was a gas station, wasn't there?
Uh, yeah, the gas station's already approved.
Okay, so that's already approved.
It's already
What, this this subject property exactly where?
Um, this, this would be uh, Penn Express, if you know where that's being spelled right now. There's a remainder parcel, I think. One of their intent in the letter that they provided to Plan Commission, they like to do like a a car wash. Right? And so under the downtown center, like drive-throughs or or use like car washes wouldn't be permitted.
Well, neither was the gas station, I think.
Yeah, so the the planning commission made um, made a decision contrary to the general plan when they did that.
So right now, there's a different car wash, there's nothing else, and blacks that there, but they the, they just want to keep it open to see possibility for a future, you know, a future uh, restaurant, right, to to project. It's open, right? So if they have an additional restaurant, they would want the restaurant rezoned to have a project, right? They don't have anything in mind right now to feature.
They, I mean, they're thinking a car wash, but there's no application, right? They're they're still thinking about it.
They're just positioning themselves for a future strategy, yeah.
Right. Yeah, and I'd like to reiterate that, keep it downtown center, we have enough car washes, we have enough drive-throughs in the city along that corridor.
Do I see a here motion?
You have to motion on?
Yeah.
I can just ask the direction.
Yeah, Simran, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, if I may, um, most of the triangular areas already developed with auto-oriented uses and the the vacant site where the car wash might go is actually in the um, in the middle of the property. It's it's landlocked and surrounded by auto-oriented uses, so it would be um, it would be challenging to develop a project there that matches what the downtown center um, allows. Um, and so that's something to keep in mind, um, as you think about what decision or direction to give get get stopped.
An area of the property of the development there, we can look at perhaps which parcel.
If I could share my screen.
So we already have a drive-through there with what? Starbucks, right? We have multiple there with McDonald's, the other so, but in that, in that vicinity though, within that area.
And
Commissioner, we're talking that is right now. Yeah. Future planning, yeah, with
Avenue fifty.
It's in here.
Go south.
This is Avenue fifty, this is first, it's this triangular street, so, site.
Is this, is this your, this, okay, goes further south?
Yeah, further south.
Because you're in a different, there we go. So that's not an updated aerial, but um, because it does include the developed Starbucks, Aldi and and the Penn Express, but there's a parcel right behind uh, Walgreens and Taco Bell that hasn't developed yet. So they sent that letter with the interest and what would develop on that site.
Thank you for that.
I stand, my position stands.
Any other commissioners have comments?
By the next
Um, can we, can we put up the slides again that, uh, Simran?
Yeah.
Can you share the screen? Okay. Okay. So remember at the end deliberate about um. The downtown center, whether you wanted to change or not. So just keep that in mind, and I have it written down.
Thank you.
Next slide. We put the next slide. So this is regarding. The um change from. Uh, heavy industrial to urban employment center. This would be consistent with the general plan designation. Um, Louis Lopez did provide some comment that, that there would be interest in keeping it heavy industrial, but if we did that, it still would not be consistent with the general plan. So uh, staff does recommend this change, uh, so that it's consistent with the general plan.
And what area is this again?
This is, yeah, so this is the area, the north um. Northeast corner of Van Buren, of Avenue fifty-four and Tyler Street. And the south uh east corner of Tyler Street and Avenue fifty-four.
To make it industrial, correct?
Uh, to make it urban employment, um, zone. Uh, and that would make it consistent with the urban employment general plan land use on the general plan.
So, so what, what, what type of landmarks are in there?
Uh, there is, I think it's called Kubata, they do um, like agricultural implement. Um, sales and rentals. Uh, I think they have a storage yard in the back. The property on the south side of Avenue fifty-four is currently being under agricultural like cultivation. Uh, and staff recommends to change because otherwise you would have to go back and change the general plan to heavy industrial. And so we would.
And if I may add, um, that does create the Housing Crisis Act issue of no net loss.
Equal.
And this, this area is too big to um make up that capacity elsewhere.
So remember that housing density issue we talked about, so just that south property, which is about, I think forty acres. It allows for maximum density sixty-five dwellings breaker. So we would have to make up two thousand six hundred units somewhere else in the city. So um, that's why we would recommend. That kind of. We, we would recommend that it be consistent with general plan versus. Making it heavy industrial.
Okay. And motion to both.
Would you direction recommend?
Recommendation, okay. Yeah. Take staff recommendation, I don't know.
Is this in the same area where Imperial Western Products is in?
Are these items coming back to us? Are we voting on these items?
You're making the recommendation to, to city council.
Yeah.
Um, it is, it is in the vicinity of Imperial Western Products.
So that, 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 that the red block right there is within that area?
Um, no, there, uh, I WP is to the, to the east.
So would it affect Imperial Western Products or one of them?
I think we just cleared that up on the CUP with the, with Western. Is that correct?
I'm looking at, I'm just curious, asking just because of this.
They're on Polk and Tyler.
Of course, that's why I was like, mother, cause I'm almost standing there. Doesn't have a visual, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Visualize again, going back to.
Now, these recommendations, do you need the majority of the commission to rule or to proceed, or how, how will we?
Yeah, so, so when you're recommending approval of the resolutions, you'll have to identify what we identified. Um, going through these slides, downtown center. Does the planning commission want to change from downtown center to urban employment center or keep it downtown center? So we'll go through that again.
Okay.
Forward to the reading. Uh, but just want to get your feedback, kind of see where the planning commission is. Um, so it's kind of your last time to kind of really see the exhibit before you and, and make some comments.
Proceed with the city recommendation.
I concur.
Next, um, next slide. Uh, this was the cleanup item. This was pointed out by um, the representative for the property owners that we were. Uh, maybe making it inconsistent, um, land use change, and it was oversight on our behalf, and so we just recommend. Uh, making that consistent with the general plan, so. The zoning map on the right-hand side, which was supposed, which shows like kind of the full base color, it's actually supposed to be split. Neighborhood, commercial and residential, so we recommend that. That's just to make it consistent.
Proceed.
Our next slide, please.
Explain this to me a little bit further.
Yeah, so this change is already gonna be made. I think this change is already in the document, right, Simran? Yeah, so all this is, is um, right now for multifamily development. Um. There is a requirement that there be a setback of fifteen feet, which we think is pretty big, right? So if you think about. Uh, Polo Bejo Villas, right? If that's a project that is all the way up to uh, close to the public right of way. We wouldn't be able to do that under the, the standard, right? You, and so we want to reduce that to at least ten feet to allow you to do multi-family project. Um, this is really geared towards. Uh, big setbacks, like the older multifamily projects that we have in the city. Uh, so that, I think this will modernize what we're doing.
Isn't commercials zero, zero, nothing?
Mm-hmm. I, I, I think we should proceed for it. This change is already in your document, so.
Yeah, proceed.
Next slide, please, Simran. Um, so this is already included in there, but if you concur, we think this makes sense, so, next slide. Um, and this is to address uh Mr. Turner's, um, can it, so we agree with this, we think it makes sense for him to continue some of the, his, this enlightened industrial uses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, without having to get a condition he's permit. We're agreeable to that, but you know, obviously the planning commission could choose otherwise. Um, but um. Maybe give some feedback on what the uh Mr. Turner mentioned about allowing towing and impounding. Staff doesn't have any recommendation there. Uh, we think there's already. An area where it can be permitted in the auto wrecking zone, but this is up to the.
Can we put a cap, sorry?
Uh, you could, you could.
I think it is, it's the conservation. Been there five years, I think that. Providing kind of a need service. So. I think we, uh.
If, if you did allow it, what would be that cap?
One?
That's fair.
Could they, could they do that? Like, it was that restrictive?
What, then, so the, what they are contemplating is just to allow one parcel to have that use?
Or just not one parcel, but one business has that use?
Seeing that it's not, it's not zone for that area.
Is that one additional or, or just the one that they, they're currently?
Well, right now it's zero, cause it's not currently allowed.
Okay, so. Yeah, it's still one. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure that, that, that that's allowed, um.
Was they, if we get, we put a clause, if we uh, get another, how you can draw, they can draw a stroke.
Yeah, I would not recommend adopting the cap of one business. Uh, if I, I would say you can do a cap in, in terms of percentage. But I would not recommend a.
Percentage of land in the area?
Yes.
Like only ten percent.
Is that subject, the subject property or the? Or the general area?
The whole.
So, so. So that means, and then there's another thing for you to consider, if you want to allow it, do you want to allow it by right as a permitted use, or do you want it to require a conditional use permit? Which would have to come back to planning.
Yeah, I think that uh, pre-existing, we could do a, a PUC, I think it, is that, is that okay with you guys, or?
Conditional commitment. CUP.
Uh, if, if I may. Offer um, some context, so the urban employment zone is a mixed-use zone which allows housing. Um, and it covers a fair portion of the city in the general plan and. A towing impound use isn't really compatible with residential uses.
Correct. Currently, and this is the way it's zoned out, they would not need to adopt the CP or get conditional use permit, correct? Yeah.
Correct, about right now, it's, it's not legally permitted where it is now. So even today, under current zoning, it's not allowed, but it's.
So you have to go to. Few more, uh, manufacturing's.
So seeing that they're not allowed or not permitted. Um.
Right, service.
I, I think the only way you probably really do it right is, is. They can come back with a conditional use permit, right? That's probably the way we go about it. And condition to build the seventy-seven homes on top of it. Next, but no, uh. It's probably the way to do it, and then put a cap on, on the land.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, you could do that. Um, again, you would have to list what that percentage cap is. So what we did with the RV storage was fifteen percent.
I think we should go down to ten or maybe in five, right? I think this is just, uh, yeah.
Sorry.
So I don't, I don't know the, the acres of the zone, obviously. But now I don't know if, if, if it uh. If it seems sufficient, right, to fit their, their establishment within that area, wherever the acreage may be, but. I think um, what would be fair to them, right? Obviously, they've been in business and operating for the past five years. But I think I'd rather see it done right. Right, and come back with a conditional use permit.
So if there was a five percent cap, they would, they would be able to fit under the five percent cap.
Yeah.
I think we do it at five percent.
Yeah.
Based upon.
Recommendation.
Um, what does he mean?
I concur.
Simran, did you have something to add?
Yeah, the urban employment zone um, in the, is about five hundred and fifty acres. So, to think about that in context of how big this property is.
Summer, but that allows for without a CP, a CUP or conditional use permit, so we're asking the planning commission is asking that. The business owner come and present the case and present with a conditional use permit. So I think that's the route we're, we're going. That's a consensus, what I hear.
I think the recommendation, conditional use permit, and then with the five percent cap, so under the five percent cap with five hundred five acres of that zone.
Yeah.
There would be eligible twenty-five acre total. That could be. This site probably went like an acre, two acre.
Yeah, more than enough, so that would be down to three percent, like something like that needed.
So what's that, twenty-five acres?
Twenty-five acres, yeah.
Yeah.
Two percent.
Two percent, probably.
Yeah.
And as we go forward, probably.
Oh, wait.
Absolutely.
Oh, point five.
It's up for your recommendation, thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Okay, so, better organization goes on, right?
So move on right now, looks like you've stopped at two percent, so we'll come back to that if you're at the end of the recommendations.
Okay.
Next slide. Uh, so this is about the RV storage, and so want to get feedback right now in the zoning document, it does have a fifteen percent cap for RV storage. Uh, but there's the other three options that you could consider. Uh, so this is up to you. If there is preferred option.
I think. Even like to get a smaller room than ten percent. What's, what's the uh, what's that look like in that zone? Obviously, the economic development is looking at ten percent, right?
Yeah. So fifteen percent of all of three different districts would be two hundred thirty-seven acres. Um, and then in total, there is one thousand five hundred eighty-one acres in all those three zones.
So ten percent would be. Hundred and ten, roughly.
Ten percent would be one hundred and fifty-eight acres, um, oh, so you'd still have ninety-eight acres or so to. Build more RV storage and mini storage.
Recommendation?
I think we're ten. Sign with the economic development committee.
The neighbors recommend you.
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
So we'll bring this back, cause that's percent. Um, and is that RV storage, and many stores, or maybe it has RV storage?
I said both, yeah.
Okay.
More than I think over the whole time and now, right?
Um, most of the time it does, sometimes RV storage proposed by, we have one place that's just RV storage, the Luxor.
I think we should combine, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Especially the ten percent, yeah.
Okay, was there any more other slides that we had to reference, recommendations? Okay. So.
Then that was the last one.
That was last one. So any final recommendation on the zoning consistency update?
This is where we would include the modification to the three parcels that are on.
Van Buren.
Van Buren, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Understood.
So on the motion. What item, one, two, and three?
Yeah, rec, you recommend approval of the, the. Find determine that consistent with sequel, and then approve resolution. PC um, dash eleven and twelve. And then you would say. Addressing the land use change is requested by the applicant on Van Buren Street. To add general neighborhood land use designation. For both zoning and the general plan.
Also, to connect, add, do we add uh, to the residential design standard, a, a visual element? I meant, uh. A portion of X, some financing to get some renderings done for that. With the language associated with that.
Um, you could, you could add a recommendation for, to get um. For staff to, to work on that, right? Um, because we would have to bring that back in the future.
I think I want to have that.
Okay, yeah, so that wouldn't do any substantive to this, this document, but it would be a request for us to come back with that, and that, I think that makes, that makes sense to do that.
Yeah. You know, company.
Are you, are you talking also, going back, are you telling also, rendering is also to, you know how that side of the street doesn't have like a sidewalk, does it have anything? But that also include how that would, that when you're requesting?
Alright, so for the residential design, it's like that. It's just language, right? Like for developers to read, over, right, instead of, and if you look at the multifamily. Um. Design standard, there's actual renderings, so that, there, that, that standard actually goes a little further.
So that's not necessarily how it would ultimately look.
No, just.
Good idea, visual.
Yeah, it gives a public, you know, with the city, with the city side.
Perfect.
For inspiration.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause all that, there, there's not a sidewalk or anything in that area too.
Yeah, it was, yeah, very, it's kind of cool. Watch out to park without them, uh, what is perfect?
It's good. Right there.
Okay, is there a?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. General residential. Is it a resolution number?
To approve both resolutions?
Yeah. Yes, approve of both resolutions.
And. To, to amend. The zoning and general plan map to address.
Okay.
The three parcels?
Yes.
And that would be modifying uh, the land use from neighborhood, commercial to general neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then going back to the slides that we went through, um, the downtown center. Um. With state downtown center, is that something the playing commission would like to see in that motion?
For the direction.
Oh, yeah, going back, we want to keep it downtown. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, downtown center, so with state downtown center. Okay, so the next one is the. Urban employment zone.
We concurred, right?
Concur with staff recommendation, okay, is that? Revolve to the planning commission, the other is the cleanup item. That staff will wanted to address. On Van Buren, is that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
The next one, this is already in the zoning ordinance, so if there's concurrence, that's already in the zoning, uh, next slide. And this is.
You had a greatest laughter this.
So is, is like commission agreeable to this to add childcare?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Um, and next for the urban employment zone is to allow the existing uses to continue without a CUP. And then outing the, adding towing is allowed use. With the conditional use permit and not to exceed two percent of the land area of that zone. Okay.
Yes.
And then. Next is RV storage. Um and it sounded like the recommendation that we heard from the commission that there would be a cap of ten percent.
Yes.
And that include mini storage with R V storage.
That's correct.
Is, that's it? Simran, did you, did you have something else? Did I miss one?
No, I think.
Go back to the two percent of the time, can I just? Reduce it to one.
Well, let's check the numbers going back, I mean, cuz it was, what was the numbers?
Five hundred.
Five hundred and fifty acres. Five hundred and fifty acres.
At two percent?
So that would be five acres. Really be a five acre cap then. No, that's one percent.
Yeah.
That's one percent.
Well, I think one percent, right, just, I think this gets closer to what it's it's original intentions, you know, I feel comfortable.
Okay.
Can we change the percentage in future?
You could, you could come back and change it to the zoning code.
Is there any additional comments from staff on this matter?
There are no additional comments from from staff.
Thank you.
He made the motion. Adding all the items, and then he had a second.
Alright, second motion.
Commissioner Morio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Yes.
Commiss uh Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, great, and I wanted to thank um Sim Simran for all the assistance so far, so still got another hurdle at the city council.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other items, Dave?
Uh just last thing, there is the um, are you on?
Uh Development Service Department. Future agenda.
Yeah, so there are some items that are outlined as future agenda items. Um one of the things I wanna bring your attention to, and we already noticed it for the June twenty-first hearing. Um the city engaged um in um updates to our planning areas of the city. So in the general plan, there are areas um outside the city's boundaries that are considered a planning area, right? So the city wants to grow in the future. In the certain areas um has to evaluate um those areas in the general plan, in the in general plan P I R. So there are three planning areas, one to the north, one to the south, and then one to the west that never had any land uses associated with it. So they're blank on our general plan. So the city is interested in bringing one particular area into our sphere of influence. Which is the area between Calhoun Street, Jackson Street, Avenue fifty-two to the south, all the way up to La Colonia. So um we prepared a general plan land use map for. That area that we'd like to present to the planning commission at the next meeting. Um so we would have to establish some land uses. City council would need to approve it, and we would have to make an application later in the future. So that's gonna be up for the next meeting, I wanna bring your attention to that. There is gonna be a community outreach meeting uh for that effort for property owners um in that area. Uh to um identify our intent with bringing it into the sphere of influence. And the land use changes we're looking to make. Uh we're trying to mirror what the county has in that area, which is largely large state, the state um residential lots. And commercial at the funeral home on the corner of Jackson Street and Avenue fifty-two. Uh that meeting will occur at six P M. On. June twentieth. And the address is five one two seven zero Jackson Street, called the whole whole Polo Estate. So if you'd like to attend, you're welcome to do that, but remember, it's also subject to the Brown Act. So um no more than two playing commissioners would be able to turn that. It's open to the public.
We, but we still have to observe the Brown Act.
No discussion.
Like if they didn't participate in the discussion.
And so the, just so I understand the nature of.
It's a it's an outreach meeting, so staff is making a presentation. Uh that playing commission wouldn't participate in.
What if I live in that area?
But they.
Look at that and send you, can I send you?
Yeah.
That might be better.
Alright, commissioners, we will provide you an update.
Thank you. And also, if you can provide a recommendation, if you live in that area.
Yeah, so if you know people in that area um that are would be interested in in potentially annexing to the city in the future. Uh please let them know about that community outreach meeting. That's it, um unless there's any questions, uh anything going on, just just a few updates, Aldi is supposed to open June twenty-second, they're gonna have a ground opening. Today, there was a ground uh breaking for the triple apartment. Just wanna give you an update what happened at the city council meeting, so after the planning commission meeting. They actually addressed most of the changes that we wanted to make in the conditions of approval. So the item that they did not address, which is still a concern for me, was the parrot pit at the top of the the building, right? So they addressed adding Juliet Copneys to. The um to the elevations, they did address bringing one of the towers, that's their job is. Um and Baghdad all the way to the corner. They did add the extra tower that we were listed. They added the bending of the bottom. Um and they addition, they added additional recessed windows, so um. So you know, as staff, I felt that was a substantial um change to the project that does make it a high-falling project. So I think it's gonna be a good project, um city council. Was agreeable to that, but uh but I do wanna thank the playing commission for keeping a high standard for the project. No elevator back. But uh the ground, so they're gonna break ground next week for that that development, and so they're developing the timeframes, the express is gonna be eighteen months.
Okay.
So it'll be open in two thousand twenty-four.
When it's like communications, I'm coming down my albums.
I don't know. Probably probably soon. The communication.
Ready across, passes Harrison, it goes on. Goes on to.
It's supposed to come down, um I had to check with uh.
I noticed too on the project, the the phone head. The block wall. Doesn't continue to the back of the property, wasn't that part of the stipulation that we condition that we uh?
We stopped that Penn Express. So when that next park will develop, that would probably be the time to.
Something to consider for that time, right?
Also to the uh comm wire that's floating right there at six and. Six and says of Charles too.
Yeah, I I didn't realize that, I think I. I don't know, I don't know what the story is behind it, I have to get an update from.
Find some dollars to bury that on the caper of good or something. Man, that's the only thing that's there.
Thank you for those updates, so Aldi on June twenty-second, and then we have that hearing, right, that open or dialogue discussion on June twentieth, you indicated? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I continue invitation for that, that's out, so I think they said that the council members, but you should also define commission, so I'll send you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve to adjourn.
Second.